To our September 20 regular council meeting. Before we begin, I'm just going to announce to those listening online that all members of council are present and we do have a quorum. And we have a full house tonight, which is, which is nice. I would, before we begin, I would ask that everyone rise for a moment of silence followed by the pledge of allegiance to the flag. Amen?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first item on the agenda, we have a couple of proclamations. The first one is regarding National Recovery Month. Is there someone here? Madam Clark, do you know if we have someone here regarding National Recovery? Okay, good. Okay, if you'll just stand, if you're here in regard to this proclamation, I appreciate it. Thank you. Oh, boy. Woo! Whereas mental health and substance abuse disorder treatment are an essential part of health and one's overall wellness, and whereas recovery from alcohol and other drug use occurs every day through a variety of recovery support resources and treatment programs, and whereas prevention efforts are essential, evidence-based, treatment is effective, and people recover across High Point throughout North Carolina and around the nation, and whereas millions of people across the United States are in long-term recovery, living happy, healthy, and productive lives, and whereas we must encourage family and friends of individuals with mental and/or substance abuse disorder to implement preventative measures, recognize the signs of a problem, and guide those in need to appropriate treatment and recovery support services, and whereas education about addiction and recovery is critical to combating the stigma and discrimination faced by individuals in recovery and individuals who are still struggling with substance abuse disorder, and whereas the Recovery Month observance continues to recognize the importance of work to support the lives of those affected by mental health and/or substance abuse disorders by raising awareness and educating communities about the evidence-based services which are available in High Point. Now therefore be it resolved that I J W Wagner, Mayor of the City of High Point, do hereby proclaim the month of September 2021 as National Recovery Month in High Point, North Carolina, and call upon our residents of High Point to observe this month with appropriate programs, activities, and ceremonies to support National Recovery Month. Thank you. Is there someone here that maybe we can do a picture with? Okay. So there's a, there's another, there's another proclamation. What are doing my glasses here there? Yeah, I'll give you guys a minute to clear out if you want. The next proclamation is regarding exceptional educators in Guilford County schools. Proclamation reads, excuse me, whereas the schools of our city are comprised of exceptional educators, and whereas they seize the opportunities to uplift their students and remind students of their worth and potential, and whereas through their commitment to their schools, this group of extraordinary educators has earned the respect and trust of their colleagues, and whereas these educators were formally recognized on August 20, 2021 by their community, which includes the High Point Schools Partnership, the High Point Community Foundation, and other supporters. Following our recognized as extraordinary educators, and if you happen to be here with us, I would ask that you stand when I call your name. Allen J Elementary, Florence Joyner. Allen J Middle, Lauren Ackerman. T Wingate Andrews High School, James Dixon. Fairview Elementary, Muriel Sanders. Ferndale Middle, Jeffrey Butler. Florence Elementary, Kelsey Williams. High Point Central High School, Dan Myers. Johnson Street Global Studies, Valerie Bond. Kearns Academy, Sandra Cordova. Kerpen Park Elementary, Sandra Kangoe. Did I get that right? I'm going with that. Middle College at GTCC High Point, Sally Shipley. Motlou Academy, Carly Hand. Northwood Elementary, Shanika Chase. Oak Hill Elementary, Caitlin Palito. Oakview Elementary, Gina Sanchez. Parkview Village Elementary, Juan Delen Jones Hunt. That was challenging. Did I get it right? All right. Penn Griffin School for the Arts, Tiffany Fason. Shady Brook Elementary, Sheila Hernandez. Southwest Elementary, Carmen Longest. Southwest Middle, April Clover. Southwest High, Michelle Lovett. Triangle Lake Montessori, Janita Jackson. Union Hill Elementary, Aisha Lanier. Welborn Academy, Heidi Davis. Now therefore I J Wagner, Mayor of the City of High Point, do hereby proclaim and recognize these extraordinary educators in the City of High Point and call upon the community to join me in personally expressing appreciation to our extraordinary educators for a job well done. Please, all of you. I would like to have someone to present this to, and we can make sure that each of you get a copy, if you would like. Is there someone who would like to come forward and, okay. Hold on, I'll be right there. I'll hand it to you. I'm going to come around and get a picture. Congratulations. Do you have more than one person? We probably can. How many teachers do we have? Y'all want to come up with your picture?
Come on, move.
Schools Partnership, who does this extraordinary educators event every year, Matt Teal, who's a co-chair, along with Dr. Joe Blosser, who's co-chairs, I believe Don Spencer, who's here, all the incredible work you all do to recognize our educators and also to support our schools. We appreciate you all. I know there's other members of the executive committee like James Adams and a few more others that I may be missing. Please forgive me, but we appreciate you all for what y'all do.
Thank you so much. Okay, next on the agenda is our public comment period. The public comment period is held normally on our first regular council meeting, but since we didn't have one due to Labor Day, we're doing it tonight. I would remind you, oh, I skipped the strategic plan update. Well, how about we do public comment and then come back to it? All right, since I'm already halfway into my spiel. All right.
Remind you that if at some point before we get to the end or towards the beginning, if we can do that one board appointment.
Okay, that'll be fine. Okay, so if you would like to speak, there was a sheet out front and I only had one person sign, so there's probably more than one person who wants to speak, I'm betting. But I would ask if you would like to speak, I'm going to let the person who signed first come forward, but there will be an opportunity for you. If you'd like to speak, if you want to, please come forward to the lectern, give us your name and address, just for the record. And public comments are limited to three minutes, and I would ask you out of respect to your fellow residents to please stick to that three minutes if you can. Mayor Wagner.
It may help for some people's clarity, and sorry to interrupt. I think some people want to speak on a specific agenda item this evening, and I think they may be curious to know, should they take their opportunity now during public comment, or do you recommend that they wait until that agenda item to speak?
I was going to get to that.
Sorry about that.
If there are, if you're here for any of the items that are public hearing items later on, those are the different, there are several zoning cases and a street abandonment case. If you're here for that, there will be an opportunity to speak on those public hearing items during that public hearing. You don't need to speak during the public comment period, although you can. If you're here on the, on the request of the NAACP, that is not a public hearing item. So if you want to speak regarding that, you're going to need to do it during public comment. So with that, again, please come forward, give us your name and address, and you can speak for three minutes. And the first person is Matt Teal.
Can I remove the mask or?
You can remove your mask if you're speaking in public.
Thank you, Mayor Wagner. Members of council, my name's Matt Teal, 1018 Emery Circle in High Point. I'm here to speak on the topic of the reparations commission in High Point. And what I will share with you is when I was first approached with the idea and the concept, I didn't like it. I didn't like the word, I didn't like how it made me feel, I didn't like the concept, anything that I had read or heard about it. It felt like to me punishment. And I feared that it would be something that would tear our community down, cause division, and cause hard feelings. However, as I talked to more and more members in the African-American community who I respect, I heard over and over again from them that they felt like this could be a process that heals, one that lifts up our community and brings our community together. Well, I for one am for those three things. And ultimately, while I still don't like the word reparations, I trust the people that have brought it forward more than I fear the word, and I believe we need to do whatever we can in all communities, but specifically in ours, to address racism now. There's certainly risks, the process could go off the rails and could go in a direction that I wouldn't want it in, and yet I recognize it's time to do something. I'll close with a quote that I love from the 20th century African-American novelist, James Baldwin, who said, "Not everything that is faced can be changed, but nothing has changed until it is faced." And so I'm asking council to give the commission a chance and to see what they come up with. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, is there anyone else who would like to speak during the public comment period? If there is, you can come forward now.
Got it.
Okay.
My name is Robert Winslow. I'm a Greensboro resident, 5906 Cardinal Lake Drive, Greensboro, North Carolina. I'm going to piggyback on what Matt just talked about regarding the reparations commission. To give you a bit of perspective on where I'm coming from, I think it's important to understand, my father was born in High Point, my mother was born in Greensboro. I grew up in a house built by my great-grandfather, great-great-grandfather in Jamestown. We had a High Point telephone, Greensboro address, lived closest to the Jamestown border. So I look at this community as one community. I think of Greensboro and High Point and Jamestown as different neighborhoods of the same, in the same place. I grew up on land that was acquired by my great-great-grandfather, great-great-great-grandfather in 1745, by land grant. I say all that not because it makes me special, but to just give you a sense of my rootedness and my care and my connection to this, to this community. I grew up next to a family that were tenant farmers. I thought it was odd that it was very important in my family to call everybody Mr. and Mrs., say yes ma'am, no ma'am, and whatnot. And yet the people that lived adjacent to us, three generations of people, people my age, my parents' age, and my grandparents' age, I called them by their first names. I called them by, called them by their nicknames. I don't know how old I was when I even learned what their last names were. I called the domestics of family friends by their first names, didn't know what their last names were. Nice people, kind people, loving people. I asked my mother, why is that, why can I call them by their first names? That's just the way it is, she said. I'd used up my why on that question, so I didn't delve any further. The children my age living next door to me, another why, why are they not in school with me? Well, they go to different schools. Well, why? That's just the way it is. We have created these systems of inequity and disrespect that we need to rectify. Reparations is a word that means repair. To Matt's point, we need healing. The only way we can have healing, the only way we can create the single most livable, safe, and prosperous community in America for everybody is to fix this stuff and to do things necessary to overcome the negatives that the stuff we created as white people has caused to divide our towns, our cities, and our nation. We can either just talk about it, or we can do things. And the starting of this process is to establish a commission to understand what reparations can and ought to look like, to understand that reparations is not pointing the finger, but is taking ownership and solving a problem, to understand that reparations is a way to try to help level a playing field that has been unlevel and kept unlevel for centuries. So I urge the council to vote in favor of this commission, and I urge the council to monitor the commission, make sure there's strong and competent people a part of the commission, that it's a collaborative effort, that it's sustainable, and that's transformative. It's not a handout. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Winslow. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak during public comment period? Yes, Reverend Thomas.
Good evening, I'm Frank Thomas. I pastor Mount Zion Baptist Church here in the city, 753 Washington Street. I'm excited today. I've often shared with people that oppression of any type will never end as long as the oppressed are the only people talking about it. I'm excited because two white guys spoke before me. Sometimes the only way things will change is when people who are in the position of change are addressed by people that look like them. My brother who just spoke talked about reparation, the definition is the making of amends for wrong or injury done. When you hear the word reparations, people always default to money. They think we're just going to write a check to African-Americans all over the place. But to make amends does not necessarily mean writing a check. And issuing this commission only means that you want to study the possibility of wrong that has happened to people in our past and see what this council might do about it to make it right.
Thank you, Reverend Thomas. Anyone else who'd like to speak? Okay, seeing none, then I'm going to close the public comment period, and we're going to go backwards on the agenda to our strategic plan update. And for that, we're going to be talking about blight reduction and our marketing and branding initiative. And I'll go first to Councilmember Chris Williams, who will give us an update on our strategic plan regarding blight reduction.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This report summarizes code enforcement activity for the month of August. During the, during this period, code enforcement staff processed 17 new minimum housing cases and 133 new public nuisance cases and collected 103 signs. In addition, the LEC staff recorded 23 zoning complaints. A total of 172 public nuisance cases were abated, 52 by the city, and 120 by the owner, owners, excuse me. Two inspectors did work on Saturday morning, 8:14, and collected 68 signs. Four properties with ordinance passed are in the appeal period. Demolition bids will be requested when the appeal period has expired. Two properties have been bid out for demolitions, two properties waiting for asbestos abatement to be completed, one property out of, out for asbestos abatement, quote, one property waiting on asbestos inspection report. There are two housing cases with an ordinance passed for demolition waiting for repairs to be completed. One is at 337 Wingo and the other is 216 Underhill. Two inspector positions remain open and interviews are underway. During the report period, there have, there were 532 total active cases, 223 active minimum housing cases, 177 active public nuisance cases, and 133 active zoning cases. I will turn the floor over to Lori Luzma.
Good evening again, or not again, it'll be again later, Mayor and City Council. The property we have, we're still continuing the nice repairs of houses. We inspected this property at 628 South Elm Street back in February of 2019, and this, we did not have any interior pictures of the house when we inspected, but this is, was an aerial view of what it looked like at the time. And so we made an inspection, it needed to be repaired. So repairs were completed and the property was sold in August, just the other month. And I contacted the owner, I talked to her, to find out if she was living in it and if she was renting, because I noticed they lived in Raleigh. And she said that she has an aunt who's living in the house, she bought it for her aunt, who's a senior. So she's living in it, and this is what the house looks like now. And when I showed the previous picture, I blocked out, there was a house to the right of this that we had started, and actually, I can't remember now if the owner demolished it or the city demolished it, but hopefully it's going to continue down Elm Street where it continues to be repaired and things cleaned up and eliminating blight as we've been asked to do by council.
Is that it? Okay, thank you. Mayor, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Councilman Williams. We'll now go to Councilman Michael Holmes for an update on our marketing.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I want to say thank you all for coming out tonight. As we have undertaken this endeavor to look at our brand, look at how we tell the story of High Point, I look across this room and I think we have a pretty good story to tell. A city who recognizes what we have been, but is also focused on who we can be and should be. So a great effort was undertaken by staff to put together an RFP. It was reviewed by the task force, then back to P and L, all with favorable recommendations. And this Friday, September 24, we will release it for, to the public for bids. So over the next few weeks, we'll receive bids, and as they come back, we will review those and assign a budget number to those, and then essentially select a vendor who will then focus on our branding. We will take a look at our current brand, and it will, once, once amended or changed is whatever the process ends up looking like, that will then cross our city. Everything that you see with the High Point symbol and logo on it will have this new refreshed, revitalized brand. So part of that process will be talking to communities all across the city to finally capture the voice of those, of every community in this city. So we recognize what we have been, but we know we can be greater, so look forward to this process.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, now Councilman Jones has requested that we move one of the appointments up on the agenda. I think that's just from a scheduling standpoint. Councilman Holmes, I'm going to turn, or, your homes, your Jones. Councilman Jones, I'm going to turn this over to you now to announce your reappointment. We'll go ahead and handle that now.
Okay, yeah, I had an appointment on the Citizen Advisory Council that needed to step down due to personal schedules and couldn't find a better replacement. He's also another Marine, so, you know, can't go wrong there. But my friend Tim Andrew has agreed and submitted his application to serve on that board in that capacity, and with council's approval, would be honored to have him serve in that capacity.
Okay, so this, this is a motion on item 2021-418, the appointment of Tim Andrew to the Citizens Advisory Council. Is there a second?
Second.
There is a second by the mayor pro Tim. Is there any discussion on this item? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? Okay, that motion is approved. Just, just to be nice, is there anyone else who is here and present to be appointed to a?
There's Jason Hicks here.
Okay.
Hey, Jason.
Okay, because I think we, it would be good for us to go ahead and get these appointments over with and get these folks on their way.
Could we do, could we do a quick photo for Tim?
Yes, if we can.
Be you and Tim.
Let's go ahead and do this one, and then we'll get them both out of the way and save a little time. Councilman Moore, I believe this is your appointment, so I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. Jason Hicks submitted his application and to be part of our Citizens Advisory Council. I had not met Jason before, but I was very impressed with his resume and I enjoyed our discussion via the telephone a few times, and, and I am impressed with him and his commitment and his willingness to serve, and I'm looking forward to his working with our CAC and the work he'll do there, and I will make that as a motion for appointment.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second for the appointment of Jason Hicks to the Citizens Advisory Council. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the appointment, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, that motion passes.
Thank you, Jason.
Thank you, Jason. Is there, are there anyone, anyone else here who's supposed to be appointed to something?
I have another point, too, but she will not be here for a few more minutes.
Let's just go ahead and do these two other ones, so I don't get confused. The item 2021-417 is the reappointment of Robert Sims to the CAC. I believe this is Councilwoman Peters appointee, and so, Councilwoman Peters, I'll turn this over to you.
Is Robert Sims here?
Nope. Yes, here.
Okay, all right. Okay, so yeah, I'd like to make a motion to reappoint Robert Sims to the Citizen Advisory Council. And I want to say also thank you, because I was not aware that your term had expired, and I'm so grateful. And I'm so grateful that you want to continue serving. And I would like to make the motion to reappoint Mr. Sims.
There's a motion and a second, too, by Councilman Johnson. Any discussion on this item? Okay, hearing none. All those, all those who approve, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, that motion passes. There's also an appointment of Councilman Jones, Maritza Gomez, to the Human Relations Commission. Councilman Jones?
Actually, she's just entered the room.
There you go.
So, yeah, I've got an appointment to the Human Relations Commission that I had to step down as well. She was actually my first call. She's very involved in the community, has a big heart for people. So she's graciously agreed to serve as my appointment.
Okay. Is there a second for this motion?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Johnson. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none. Hearing none. All those in approval of this appointment, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? Okay, hearing none. That motion is approved. Those of you who are here and who are being appointed, if you'd like to come forward, we'll get, get some photos. Council folks who appointed them, if y'all would like to step down and get pictures with them, that'd be fun. We'll just pause for a moment for that. Um, no, let's wait. I understand that's all these guys can leave.
The other way.
Oops.
He's got other motives.
Thank you to each of you four for being willing to serve the city. We really do appreciate it. It's often hard to get folks who are willing to serve on committees. So I really do appreciate you doing that. Then next on the agenda, we're going to go back up to the Finance Committee portion and of the agenda. And for that, I'm going to turn the meeting over to Mayor Pro Tem Brett Moore.
Thank you, Mayor Wagner. We did have our meeting regularly scheduled on Thursday. I want to take just a second to thank Councilman Jones for chairing that meeting and Mayor Wagner for filling in with Councilwoman Peters and Councilman Holmes in my absence. And although I was absent, for those of you that may not know, I was listening in via the cloud, so I was there. But before you tonight, you have items twenty twenty-one dash three ninety-three consecutive into twenty twenty-one dash four zero five. There was an additional item that came in late is twenty twenty-one dash four twenty-two at the request of Councilman Williams, which we were glad to entertain. And so I am presenting this consent agenda to council with a favorable recommendation for approval.
Second.
Okay. There is a motion which has been seconded, I believe, by Councilman Holmes for approval of these consent agenda items. Is there any discussion among any of, of any of these items? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of approval of the finance consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? Okay, that motion passes. Thank you.
That's all for finance. Thank you.
Okay. Next on the agenda are the Prosperity and Livability Committee items. And for that, I'll turn the meeting over to Councilmember Hudson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Prosperity and Livability Committee met on August fourth, and we had a presentation from the local chapter of the NAACP. And it is my honor and pleasure to introduce Mr. Jim Adams to the podium to give us a presentation.
Mr. Mayor, city officials, and all of you here with us this evening, good evening. I'm James Adams, President of High Point Branch at NAACP. I thank you for being here with us this evening. It's been two years plus that our branch has been working on the subject of reparations commission. It is Ms. Doris Patrick who brought this committee together and helped us get this conversation started. Two-plus years, and here we stand. If not the most exciting historical, if not the most exciting and historical opportunities for our community. With that, I would like to, how my phone go off right when I'm standing here? Two-plus years, we stand here at one of, if not the most exciting historical opportunities in our community. With that, I'd like to have our Chair of the High Point NAACP Reparations Commission Committee, Attorney James Mays. Assisting Mr. Mays this evening with questions you might have are Reverend Dr. Brad Lilly, Benita Sims, and Ms. Elma Harrison. Thank you all for being here this evening.
Mayor, City Council, now the distinguished guests with us here tonight, I will be brief. I just want to emphasize four points. We are asking for a commission. We're not asking for a check to be mailed next week. We're not asking, I saw some nice houses on the West Side, we're not asking for those. We're asking for a commission, those, excuse me. It's become automatic, you know, to try to speak through these things. We're asking for a commission to continue the discussion. All right. Second point. Based upon contemporary events, we see that an opportunity has emerged. The convergence of these events has allowed us to focus in on what seem to be intractable problems or challenges, I should say. But it is the distinct and unique feature of our society, of our former government, that we can periodically have these moments where we move forward, where we can repair, where we can remedy, where we can heal, where we can become, as one of our members said, that one High Point, that one community. We have the opportunity. I ask you tonight to consider this commission as an opportunity to begin a very important discussion. If you have any questions, as the President said, we have three of our members here who are ready to answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Mays? If not, the P and L Committee voted to make the recommendation to create a commission that the NAACP has recommended and to endorse the resolution that you all have a copy of, minus the last section of that resolution that lists a hundred thousand dollar monetary. That, that is not in the resolution. So I will make that recommendation as a motion.
Okay. There's a, there's a motion to approve the resolution that was submitted in our packet with the exception of the last, the section eight being removed. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. So there's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on this item?
Go, go ahead.
Go ahead, I'm looking for something. Councilman Holmes?
Recently, in P and L, Dr. Patrick Harmon came forward and he introduced some information to us that frankly, I have been grappling with since I heard it. And forgive me. Study done by High Point University said that someone in our city who lives in the two seven two six oh zip code versus someone who lives in two seven two six five would experience seventeen and a half years less life expectancy. In our city, ten to twelve miles apart, our citizens are being robbed of nearly two decades of life because of systems that exist. I don't see how anyone who said that they care for their fellow man could abide that. I'm not one to get emotional. But that brought me pain. And I've felt that pain since I heard that information. So if there's anything that we can do that can alleviate that kind of struggle and suffering to improve the quality of lives for our fellow man, we should take every conceivable effort to do so. Thank you.
Councilman Moore, I believe you had something you'd like to say?
Wesley, what is the, the recommendation of the makeup of this board is what?
It's said in the, in the resolution, it has that.
It's in section four. You're looking at the PowerPoint. It's in the actual resolution.
Actual, in the resolution itself.
Mm-hmm. It's two members by the mayor, three members by council, and eight members from outside of council.
Does anyone here representing some of the answers from NAACP see any conflict potentials from elected officials that come and go being part of the council? And what is the advantage or disadvantage to that not being part of the council, being part of the commission?
Can you restate that, Councilman?
Yeah. Thank you, Ms. Sims. The, having five members, you're looking for a total of thirteen, is that correct?
It would be five appointed by council, not.
Not.
But it wouldn't be members.
Five, right.
Okay. That's right. Okay. Yeah. Two, two appointed by the mayor, two appointed by the council, three appointed by the council, and eight from outside. Thank you. Appreciate it. Glad to help you.
From one mayor to the next.
There you go. Is it, are there any other comments or clarifications on this, folks? Anyone else like to speak?
And I, and forgive me if I didn't. I, I was looking to see this commission, is, is it a, is it a, has a sun, I know it has a sunrise, does it have a sunset on this? Or this is a continued commission through maybe this body, too?
The way the resolution is written, it does not have a sunset in it. However, it does not recruit this council from setting a sunset and saying if the life of the commission is twelve months, it's whatever you establish it to be until the work is done. So a minute cannot carry over to another council out of thing to actually address or work with what comes out of the commission. You can't make that, maybe we can't make that be a requirement. But at the same time, as we move forward with this, you do have the ability to say this commission will be established for twelve months. However, the work plan is decided upon by the commission.
Okay. It, it says that the, that the commission will submit to city council within one year its report and that the commission then terminates no later than ninety days after the submission of the report. So it would be a year plus ninety days.
Forgive me because I did not see that.
Anyone else with any comments?
I've got some comments.
Yes.
All right. So first of all, I'm absolutely, I would absolutely be ready tonight to vote in favor of a commission. But I do want to say a couple of things. We already had to change on the resolution the, the hundred thousand dollars at the bottom. I think that there's a, a few more items that need to be tightened up. I've talked, I've made it very clear with, with several folks about some of the things, you know, maybe using one High Point instead of reparations. Because I know that, I've talked, a lot of people have called me and they do associate reparations with, with money. And so I just want it to build a bridge and not tear, you know, tear apart. But there's also in this resolution, it talks about distribution of wealth. And I think that if we use a lot of that national verbiage that's tearing our country apart, it's going to tear our community apart. I want a commission and then maybe we look at how we appoint the people. What, what skill sets do we want them to have? Are they going to be business owners? Are they going to be, you know, so I think that we need to tighten up the resolution a little bit. I hope that's not offending anyone. But other than that, I'm ready to approve a commission. So.
Okay.
I'm, I'm sorry, I act like I'm ready to fund, but when the questions are asked, I feel compelled to respond to that. Number one. This resolution is a resolution that was adopted by the local branch of the High Point NAACP. That's number one. So it is the, the, the resolution in its entirety, except for the portion that you all said you needed to pull out regarding the dollars and the funding, is the resolution. Now, if in the course of appointing that commission, the commission and those involved decide that we feel it needs to be addressed in a different way, that should be the work of the commission. So if you all are going to cherry pick what portions of it you want to support, that's not fair to the work of the commission. It has already been established that there will be work done, research done, a lot of things done in the course of doing this work. And so I think that at this point, it's incumbent upon this body to say, yes, we will support the commission and the formation of it, with the exception of the dollars. And then let the commission do its work and report back to you what their thoughts are, what their recommendations are, and how they think we should move forward. But if you start moving all this stuff around, it no longer has the same meaning and the same, I guess, workflow or work that we're telling you needs to happen in our community. I understand that reparations are scary, but we deal with scary stuff every day. And so at the end of the day, what we need to do is look at this on its face, and we've already gotten several definitions of what reparations means. And so it doesn't necessarily, we know this body does not have the wherewithal to give money to any citizen in High Point out of the budget that you all manage. We understand this. But what we're asking is, let's have a conversation about how we make better communities, how we make better people who live in our communities. And the redistribution of the wealth is not about changing money around, it's about you all looking at your budgets and your work plans and saying, how can we uplift these communities that are in trauma? And we have communities in our city that are traumatized. We have to work through that process, and that's the purpose of this commission. So I would ask you all, really ask you, not to start looking at pulling this resolution apart, but let's look at voting for it on its face and then let's move forward with getting the work done. And we hope that at the end of all this, everybody in here is going to rise up as a result of it. And this council can do something really cutting edge, really exciting, and they can come out of this saying, look what we did. Created the single most livable, safe, and prosperous community in America. That's what we want.
Mayor, can I follow up with a question?
Yes.
If I'm going to follow up with another question, thank you so much, Ms. Sims, for saying that. This question is for the NAACP and our staff, too, because one thing that I can see that has a huge value, we've got lots of grants available through federal monies. And most of those grants ask for a component of equity and disparities. And most of those grants are asked for, uh, a component of equity and disparities. Does the commission, as the NAACP see it, see where they can help the city position ourselves so that we can receive some of those? And does staff see that as a help to, for us to position ourselves so that we can get more of that federal funding? Is that a fair question?
Mr. Mayor and council members and those in this chamber, my name is Brad Lilly. I pastor Chikana Glory Church International, and I am a member of the High Point NAACP. When we talk about the establishment of a commission, we already know that its purpose is brought forth because it's going to take more study. But the motivation and the justification for some kind of direct action is clear. That's why we asked for the creation of a city commission to explore community reparations for African-American citizens of High Point. Does High Point owe a moral debt to our African-American citizens? Two hundred and fifty years of slavery, ninety-nine years of Jim Crow, sixty years of separate but equal, thirty-five years of racist housing policy. Until we can reckon with our compounding moral debts, this city will never be whole. And that's what we are seeking. Injustices are still built into the structure of our society today. Denying opportunity, financial prejudice, policing and imprisoning, vastly disproportionate, proportionate, and refusing to rectify wrongs has went on for a long time. If we want the city that our slogan boasts as of, the first word in your slogan is creating, we want to create a commission that we can look at past wrongs, and we all know they exist, and figure out ways to rectify, rectify, make things right. Some of the questions you may have are questions actually that the commission will work on and come back with something that is morally right for all of us. When you talk about the redistribution of wealth, we're not talking about we're going to go into your accounts, take from you what you have. We're talking about a level, a level playing field. We're talking about admitting, yes, things were done wrong in the past. You weren't a slave master, and I was not a slave. But if you go back far enough, you'll find some kind of connection, and you'll find where the African-American was held down while people of another color had privileges that we were denied. And so I know we didn't choose to be born in a prejudiced society, and it's affected all of us, subconsciously it affects all of us. And we see it every day. We face it every day. And what we want to do is be able to look at you at the end of this journey, say, thank you. You've helped, you've recognized the need, you faced this challenge, and you voted yes. We don't know what's on the other side of this journey, but it has to start. The first word of the city slogan is creating, and that's what we came and asked of you. Create a commission. Vote yes. I thank you.
Ms. Peters, do you need someone from staff to address what your question was to?
I, I'm not even sure if they could answer it, but if they could, was that a?
Could you restate it just?
Yeah, I was just wondering if, you know, with all the different grant opportunities that we have coming in from, uh, federally, could, can you see where this commission could help us position ourselves, um, to qualify for some of those?
I think that, Councilmember Peters, this is Tasha Logan Ford, city manager for the city of High Point. I think that whenever we're thinking about disparities in our community, um, there are grant opportunities that come that typically are targeted towards you addressing specific issues. Anytime that you have research that points to those disparities, or you can identify groups that have been harmed, I think it can help you better design programs to meet those needs. I don't know what those grant opportunities are, you know, they're, they're typically changing. A lot of them come through housing and urban development or other entities. They may be even be energy related, thinking about infrastructure around water and sewer. They're just very broad. But I think that if anytime that you have more information that tells you what the needs are, you can always use that information in preparing and helping to tell the story in your community to try to identify funding. So if you're asking me for a specific program that I can list tonight to answer that question, I, I can't do that. But always having the information that tells you where the needs are in your community can help you position and prepare for grant applications as they come down.
Perfect.
I got another question, and, um, probably, if it's okay. Oh, oh, I'm sorry, this is Councilman Chris Williams, Ward Two. Either Mayor Sims or Brad Lilly, I, I'm not sure which one. Just got a quick question. Um, and, and, and I'll tell you that, of course, I support it. I support it because I think that it's going to do more than just show some, some, um, opportunities we can to go fix, but it also shows some of the work that's already been done. With the diversity, equity, inclusion, uh, department created here, the, uh, operation in this much projects that was going out, there's no cost to people getting their homes fixed. I mean, there's a lot of things that's been done. I think that, uh, this actually may even put a spotlight on those to show people where they can, can actually go and receive some of the services and the opportunities that we already presented here. Uh, my thing has always been the kind of understanding of housekeeping, so I ain't trying to change anything. I just want to get an understanding. The eight, um, outside members, um, that will be in a, in a, hopefully I'm reading this, I see, it says, uh, eight members shall be selected from the African, African American civil rights and civic organizations that have historically championed the cause, uh, of the city of High Point for justice, for the, for the city of High Point. Those people will be selected by whom? Like, is it going to be from the initial five that's created from the commission? Or, I, I, that's just a question. And I, and I hope that's bad.
Well, um, for those, eh, just as the, uh, proposal, the request says, to be selected from, uh, organizations, communities, private individuals, who we feel can best represent the African-American community, NAACP, Ministers Conference, uh, and other groups like that. Each group would actually, once identified, would actually need and select their own representative to sit on the commission.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on this topic?
Yeah, I would like to make a comment. Tell Ron Johnson, um, that, number one, I'd be supportive one hundred percent, uh, the formation, the creating of this commission, and you are correct, you have to start somewhere. Okay? Anytime you create or you're forming something, we're looking for results. Okay? And I think forming this, matter of fact, there are no forming this commission, we will get some results. And in order to do that, you got to start it. So I think it was, I read it thoroughly, I think, um, elegant job in, in this resolution. Thank you.
Anyone else like to be heard on this?
I would like to, this is Councilman Moore. I just want to, uh, Mr., um, Robert Winslow shared his story briefly, so, um, and I appreciate that, and appreciate what he said. Um, so I, I'll share mine real quick. I was born in this town in nineteen sixty-three, so I probably didn't know I was alive till sixty-nine, seventy-one. I was just, just being a kid. Right on the heels of the civil rights movement, um, certainly was taught my history from family and public school teachers at Northeastern Andrews and on into college. But I have been the great beneficiary, I guess you would say, of growing up in a time when I did, because I know of all of the things of which Mr. Lilly spoke, but I didn't have to live them. And very fortunate that that happened. But I also benefited from the folks like former councilwoman Mary Lou Blakeney and all of those who stepped out when things were wrong, um, in an effort to wondering if, if they would ever see them get right or better. And I did see them get better. Um, I, Andrews High School was the first school in the state of North Carolina to be created for the distinct purpose of bringing black community and the white community together. Prior to that, you had Penn Griffin, and you had High Point High School. Um, I had parents who taught me not to see anybody as color, but for what they are. So I have seen and realized everything that is said, whether it be from banking, whether it be to discrimination, whether it be those things, but I've seen the flip side too. And at fifty-eight years old, I have many friends that chose to marry interracially, um, many of color that started their own businesses that have become very successful, um, and have raised wonderful, law-abiding, great children, um, that are assets to our My concern is from my story, all the progress that we have seen, that we do not get sidetracked into a history, however unfair it may have been, but I know through my history that lots of whites fought and died to help move us away from slavery too. And lots of whites hooked arms and marched with Martin Luther King and many others through Alabama and other places as well. So our history is marked with unfortunate circumstances, because our history's made up of people like me that are fallible human beings. So I have mixed emotions on this, because while I don't want any wrongdoing going unpunished, I have seen great progress in my life, and I see it in my twenty-eight and twenty-six-year-old children as they're living out their lives in a corporate world and in a city and in a country that is becoming more and more and more diverse with all kinds of issues and color just being one of them. So the intentions, I believe, are well-founded. Um, with due respect to, um, someone I admire quite a bit, our first female mayor of color in High Point, um, and she's always been very persuasive and smart. I do have concerns that if it's not tightened up a little bit, that it leaves a lot of room for things to get off the track. And I wouldn't want that to happen. I, this council, I'm going to tell you, I've been fortunate to serve this city that I love several times, and it's meant a lot. And it's the, one of the most, I've had the opportunity to travel quite a bit. It's one of the most caring communities anywhere. Um, you can see it in the new, um, four point one eight five million dollars that we're trying to raise. Um, you can see it in many of the policies that this council has passed. So if we're going to go down this road, whether it's because Asheville did it, or somebody else did it, or whatever, then I want us to be very careful, because once I'm gone from this dais, I wouldn't want it to be something that, that takes us backwards instead of forwards. Thanks.
Anyone else like to speak?
Just one, point of clarification, I guess, in some ways, um, you know, I, I was kind of not sure about what the purpose of this was, and so, you know, I called Councilman Holmes, and I've spoken to Councilman Jefferson about it. It seems to me that, I mean, it was very informative, like, I'm a smarter person after having that conversation, all the facts that, uh, Councilmember Holmes was able to enlighten me on the things that were mind-blowing. I just wouldn't even believe him had he not told me, but it really seems like, um, what this commission is doing is getting us, the data, this us is in the council, getting us data, facts, figures, uh, from studies that have been done, like the High Point one you, you mentioned or whatever. So, uh, I liked Monica's idea about possibly, uh, a, a different name that it called it what it would be, um, which in my opinion would be more like a racial economic impact commission, something that studies, it can give us the counsel, because we need to know this information, um, how, whether it's, you know, African-American community, whether it's Hispanic, whoever, if anyone, any minority group in the High Point is in a disadvantage, and if there's anything we can do to cure it, um, that, that would be my only suggestion. I've spoken to a couple of members of council, I won't name everybody, but that seem to be okay with that. If the, the city's going to create the commission, we're going to title the commission, I think the title of the commission would be more in tune with what the actual goal of the commission would be if it were under the umbrella of racial economic impact commission.
So I, I have a question for, um, Councilman Hudson.
Yes, sir.
Just to be clear, that your motion is to approve this resolution as written minus section eight, correct?
That is the motion from P and L Committee.
On the P and L Committee?
Yes.
Um, so this, in effect, creates the commission. It's not then up to us to, as Councilman Jones said, to then turn around and create a commission and give them directives on what to do. It's all included in here.
It is included in the resolution, yes.
Okay. All right. Um, I, I'll just give you my, my feelings on it. I, I think this council, um, since we got elected in twenty nineteen, uh, and I've been on council- I, I think this council, since we got elected in twenty-nineteen, and I've been on council since twenty-twelve, but I've lived in High Point my whole life, and I've, you know, I, I tried to keep track of local politics and what was going on, and I remember, I remember coming to council meetings when I was a kid, you know, and seeing Bob Wells and Roy Culler and those folks back in the seventies. And honestly, I think this council has done more for the, for the cause of equal opportunity and a commitment to justice than, than any council I've ever seen. And I, I think there's a lot of folks in the, in the city who maybe don't know what this council has done, so I'd like to point out some of those things. In, on May the fourth of twenty-twenty, and I, and I give you that date, because that was during a period prior to our current great national discussion on race began. May the fourth was before Memorial Day weekend in May twenty-twenty, and, and I think we all know what happened Memorial Day weekend in May twenty-twenty. So before that happened, this, this council committed to revising our personnel resolution to make our hiring process more transparent and fair for everybody. We initiated staff leadership training and development to, to allow folks to, who are within the city count, within the city staff, to receive the training that they need to, to move up and to be able to pursue their careers better, have better training for that. We approved mandatory diversity training. We approved more outreach to minority job candidates and to minority-owned businesses and contracting for the city. We approved a diversity equity inclusion specialist position, which is the first one our city's ever had. We approved, we have, throughout the course of, of the time we've been on council, we have given lots of support to eliminating food deserts in High Point, which is something that disproportionately affects the minority community. We have, one of our strategic plan prongs is our blight reduction strategy. And this, as Councilman Williams spoke earlier, that, this council and our past council in the last five years has done more to reduce blight in the city of High Point than any, any council in decades. And that is, again, that is, that is an issue that disproportionately affects the minority community in High Point. Not only that, this, this council on our, during our strategic planning session last year, went a step further and said, we're gonna, we're gonna try to focus and concentrate on our efforts in a more holistic way in, in a certain neighborhood. And we're working to, to establish which neighborhood that's gonna be, and try to, to really look holistically, not just at housing, but what does that neighborhood look like in terms of city services? What do the curbs look like? What do the sidewalks look like? What does the road look like? Are we making that area safe for investment? We have supported and invested millions of dollars in new affordable housing for High Point, including the, the bonds for the redevelopment of Dana Brooks, which is underway right now. We've also increased, uh, increased police support to provide and promote anti-violence in safer neighborhoods. That is a, that is a thing that disproportionately affects minority citizens as well. And if you want investment in poor neighborhoods, the number one thing you gotta do is you gotta make them safe, because people will not invest money in neighborhoods that are not safe. We also have a long history of support for our High Point Community Against Violence to, to redirect and retrain offenders. That's been a, a big success story, noted all over the country. So this is a council that I think understands the situation and understands the why. And, and I want everybody here to understand that I, that I understand the why. I, I understand the history, I'm a student of history. I do a lot of reading on my own about the injustices of slavery and Jim Crow, and these are things I do on my own, because I'm interested in that history. So I, I get the why, and I understand that there are disparities. The issue that I have with the current proposal is more about the how. I, I respect your reasoning, I understand why you want the commission, I get it. Unfortunately, one of the byproducts of going to law school and becoming a lawyer, and our city attorney, Ms. Carlisle, will probably echo this, is they tell you when you go to law school, you'll never think like you did before, you'll think like a lawyer from then on. And so unfortunately, I'm cursed with that, so I think like a lawyer. And the, the city is, and I believe, I believe that the city attorney made a presentation to the P and L Committee about this, about how legally restricted we are as a city in terms of what, what we can do that might be considered reparations, or, or might be considered as, as some, some sort of monetary system of, of repairing our communities in this, based on this issue. We're, we're extremely legally restricted in what we can do. And that's the main thing that concerns me about this proposal. I don't want to create a commission that is not gonna understand perhaps the parameters that the city has to operate within, because I don't want you to spend a year studying and studying and coming back and bringing us things, only for us to say, well, we're, either we're already doing that, because we're already doing a lot, a lot more than councils in the past have done, we're, we're doing. Or we're not legally able to do that. And so my, my fear is that without creating some parameters ahead of time, or what this commission is and what it's, what it's to do, and kind of what is expected in the, in the back end, that we may end up with that council or with that commission having a lack of, I wouldn't call it a lack of focus, but coming back and bringing us things that end up, that we can't do. There, there's a lot of things in the wording here that, that philosophically I, I don't agree with, and I, and I won't get into that, because I don't wanna keep you here forever. But this seems to me to be the sort of thing where you have to pass it to find out what's in it, and I, and I don't like that. I, I'm the type of person that I like to see exactly what I'm agreeing to, and even with this, even with this wording here, it seems like there's a whole lot of stuff that's just out there undecided. And so for me, it's, it's gonna be really hard for me to, to support this. I, I understand the why, don't, don't misunderstand what I'm saying. I understand the why, and I understand the, I understand why you want to do this, I really do. My problem is really with the how. We, and, and there's one philosophical thing that I have too, and maybe, maybe Councilman Moore alluded to it, I don't know. But I really have serious questions over whether the problems that we have in America surrounding race and dealing with, with race and the injustices and the just outright reprehensible behavior in the past can ever be fixed by government. I, I just don't know that they can. I, I think ultimately, any government, not our, not the city government, the state government, the federal government, I, I don't know that it can be fixed by government. I, I think that ultimately what's gonna fix the problem is gonna be by changing the hearts of people, and who you deal with and how you deal with them. Government, by its nature, is coercive. We, we take money from people and we spend it, and we, we force people to do things they don't wanna do. That's what government does. And when you do that, you're always creating resentment in somebody. And it's like Reverend Thomas, you, you'll know, when you give the gift, you, the person who gives the gift gets more than the person who receives the gift, you know? And, but government doesn't give gifts, government takes from somebody to, to give to somebody else, and then often the person that was taken from has resentment for that. And, but at, at the same time, we do have an obligation as a government to stand up and say that this is the right thing to do, to set an example for what we feel like is the right way to live and the right, the right ideals and principles that we want people to live by, and I respect that. And, and trust me, I, that's, that's somewhere where I think we can get. I'm, I'm just not convinced that this commission, as presented, is the way to do it. And I, I tend to agree with Ms. Peters, that I feel like we can get there. I, I think this needs a little bit more study and a little bit more fleshing out to be able to determine some parameters that it needs to, that it needs to operate within, so that when you come back in a year, we're gonna get things that the city is legally able to do, and not outside of that. So as it's presented, I'm, I'm, I can't support it as it's presented. I understand the why, I just don't agree with the how. And I would, my preference would be to take a little more time to delay and study this, and, and get something back to council that is a little more tight, and is a little bit easier to understand. So that's my position.
Mr. Mayor, if you'll allow me.
Yes.
Uh, I'm grateful for this opportunity. I do not for one second take for granted this chance we have to have discourse and to deliberate and to discuss about something that is very important. Our city is catalyzing itself, we have for the past several years been doing what some would have considered to be impossible. And as I came into government, what was often said to me was that this sort of revitalization, that it's an economic tide. And my point to everyone I spoke to is that economic tides are powerful to lift all of the boats, except for those that are anchored down, and except for those that have leaks in them. And I've often said, if we're gonna do revitalization right, we had better address the boats that have those anchors and those leaks. There's something I'm hearing this evening that is pretty important, and so I wanna juxtapose a couple of things to ensure that we're all having the same sort of context, the same conversation, reading from the same sheet of music here, because I think we can get to one mind and one agreement. You know, Dr. King wrote this letter from a Birmingham jail. It was a powerful thing, and those of us here who have alluded to being students of history, we know that letter, and we know that what Dr. King spoke to when he referenced the conservative ministers and those various groups and organizations that said, hey, we get what you want, we understand your reason, we're just a little perplexed with the how, and we just think we need a little more time. And Dr. King's response to that was, it's easy to ask folks to wait when you're not the one that's waiting. And, you, you know, I mean, you guys know me, I, I got a whole list over here, but I'm gonna try to do my best to keep it summarized, if you don't mind. So, you know, we're having this conversation about the name. I've personally been one who, I mean, heck, I believe in getting work done, I don't actually like all the newspaper headlines, I really just care about the work. But while we're having conversations about names and about people getting upset, I do wanna be clear that whatever effort we undertake, if you allow it, the term will be vilified, it will be made out to be a boogeyman. I know it, because twelve months ago, had I said critical race theory to you, you would never thought anything, but now whispering in someone's ear, and their hair stand up, and they might just jump through the roof, because now that word has meaning, that term has meaning. So I wanna be clear that we can get caught up on any term we want to, but I, I do wanna be clear about another thing, because I'm, I'm also very sober-minded on this, that for me, the name ain't that important, because ultimately, when I did shake hands and kiss babies and knock on doors and pledge to folks that would serve them, I said that I would care more about the work than about all the stuff that's romantic and waxing poetic. So I do wanna be clear that when we get done with this, my focus is how we get to outcomes, not to all the stuff that, that's all fluffy and romantic. Talk about another thing, there's this point about how we may not be able to address all of the issues, that sometimes government just can't fix everything. I do believe that, I mean, everyone up here is a politician, there's other politicians in the room, I don't think that was our phrase when we went campaigning. I think that when we campaigned, we told people that their problems, we would do our best to address those solutions. In fact, a decade ago, when there was the High Point Project to ignite High Point, the same arguments were made, that maybe it just ain't government's job to bring businesses, ultimately, we can't impact what's in a business owner's heart, if they don't wanna come to our city, they don't wanna come to our city. But you had a city council who stood up and said, doggone it, this is our city, if something's to be done, we can do it. And they did it, and low, it was done. So it's my thinking that we do have the wherewithal, we do have the ability, we can do it, and now it just comes down to why should we do it? There was a conversation around, you know, does this point back to too much history and perhaps give us too much of, of, of a reconciling of those issues that might tear us apart more than drive us together? I do think that the primary point here ain't about going down in history, I think the primary point here is that, that study that Councilman Holmes referenced, that, that study went from nineteen sixty-seven, that study was from now.
Yeah.
And so the issue is not about what happened over hundreds of years, the issue is that across every single measurable outcome, black people are at the bottom. Those who are locked up, those who don't get to finish school, those who have terminal illness, those with higher infant mortality rates, those who end up homeless, those with mental health disease, I mean, the list could literally go on and on, at every single measurable outcome, we're at the bottom. And so when you talk about the why, this ain't about some sort of novel conversation to get people riled up about our history, this is because right now, in communities, people are dying, getting sick, living outside, and it's all because, I don't know, government thinks they can't fix it. I got a couple of other thoughts here. I think that we are doing great work currently, I think that the initiatives we are doing are very much internal though. And I think that was right, I think we had to do that first, I think that before you go out to do, you kinda gotta get things right on the inside, so that way you can build from a strong foundation, that way this organization of nearly fourteen-hundred employees has the right sort of core values that can go out and do some things. So I'm very proud of the internal initiatives we've done, but we've gotta create the single most livable, safe, and prosperous community in America, that means we've gotta look at what sort of external solutions do we have. And so I come to the point in which I think we get to talk about potential solutions, I think right now, in terms of semantics, we've got a resolution offered by an organization with a commission that's got these specific sort of guidelines, but what I also hear, the spirit of it, and forgive me, Mayor Sims, if I misquote you, the point here really is, dog, let's have the commission and then figure that out. We can figure out the scope of work, we can figure out the timeline, we can figure out the roles and responsibilities, we can figure out the deliverables there. If anyone has any hesitation about where that sends us, well, then you put some parameters in place, ensure that we know that the challenge is, every single one of those outcomes that is terrible, that says that if you're black, you're more likely to have each and every single one of these terrible outcomes happen to you, the challenge is to address those outcomes, and then in terms of the rest of the parameters, we can say to the commission, let's continue to approve those things along the way. But if we don't have the commission and the conversation doesn't start, I guarantee it's gonna fall through the cracks, because we were supposed to get updates regularly about our diversity initiatives, and I ain't heard about that in about six months. So I, I, I just wanna be honest, that there's a lot of, I mean, heck, dog, we can go back and forth about a lot of things up here, but the truth is, the thing we have to ask ourselves, is the problem big enough to do something about? And if the problem's big enough to do something about, I mean, we gotta fix it, because ultimately, while government has the choice today to be involved in how we address these outcomes, I think that's because government was absolutely involved in the outcomes, like the work. Like the work that got us here. It was government that made redlining. It was government that told you, if you escape with another black slave, we will literally kill you unless you come back. And if you come back, we'll give you your freedom, just make sure you bring the black slave back. I mean, government made that law, that was government's law. Government gave laws for voting rights, governments gave laws in terms of literacy. Governments gave all the laws that kept the communities down. And I don't think it's government's time to say, you know, I know I spent hundreds of years creating a problem, but, I mean, heck, can we really fix the problem now? I don't think that's it.
I, I, I'm sorry.
Councilman Holmes, go ahead.
Thank you. I want to, uh, give a more recent example of, uh, government in, in action. Right here in our city was a problem that, uh, the city inherited with a, with a neighborhood that was annexed into our city. For the last 25 years, the city experienced flooding to the point to where it became a danger to the citizens. They couldn't get out. Their property was being washed away. I'm very proud to say that I initiated, it's in my ward, I initiated the, the discussion on that. We went back and forth about what we could do as a city to alleviate this problem. But we came together as a city and the city, government, took action to solve the problem in Foxwood Meadows. We spent dollars to rectify that problem. We inherited this problem, it was annexed into the city. It, it wasn't something that the city created, but the city solved the problem. So don't say that we can't solve problems. This is, we can absolutely come together and solve problems if there's a collective will for us to do so. So, we, what I don't want us to do is have, uh, selective activism when it comes to government.
Yeah.
We shouldn't be selective about how active or how big our government is going to be because we're afraid of the terminology that we're gonna use. If we're gonna be bold in one area, let's be bold in every area.
Did, Ms. Peters, did you have something to say, or was it Mr. Moore? I can't remember which one was trying to speak.
Yeah, well, okay, I was, so I did start too, and then, um, so, well, and thank you, Sarah. I was thinking about government too, you know? I've always liked less government and I always thought, well, you know, government shouldn't really be involved in this. Until I started doing the racial equity institute training and realized that it was government 400 years ago that said, you can't own land unless you're a white man. Oh, okay, wow, you couldn't even own land if you were a white woman. So anyways, government did kind of start all this, but anyways, so then I was taking notes about, you know, possibly making an alternate motion that I don't know if will make some folks mad, but, you know, when I read the one about the commission, it says, "The commission will focus on one High Point, bringing to bear the necessary resources to address our ongoing struggle. We envision black families filling our baseball stadiums and participating in the viability of our downtown. We envision black businesses occupying offices and cotton yards. The commission will show that full participation of the entire community makes our community stronger and creates ecosystems focused on making High Point a great place to work, live, and raise our families. The commission will be given a timeline for recommendations to the city and the life of the commission will end at such time as mutually agreed upon goals are met." That sounds awesome, and that's exactly what I want to see happen in High Point. But then in number three, under the resolution, it says, "The duties that the commission shall perform", it says, "Identify, compile, and synthesize the relevant corpus of evidentiary documentation of the institution of slavery in the state of North Carolina and the city of High Point, which existed from 1750 through 1865." Da-da-da-da-da, "The capture and procurement of Africans for slavery in the state of North Carolina and the city of High Point." So, I don't even know what to say. I mean, I understand that that is, is what you're addressing because it happened and it was, it was, you know, not fair. But I don't know how studying all that is gonna help us to get to this, because all that, I don't know. I, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm kind of going on and on, but I want this, and I don't know how to get there. I definitely think that, I, I think what Matt said, uh, change, you, you can't have change until you face it. You can't face it until it's changed. So anyway, I think, I always believe in conversation. You cannot move forward without conversation, and you gotta bring the right people to the table. I don't think anybody has all the answers. But I do think that it is time in High Point to bring the conversation about, to have a commission that can, can speak with staff, maybe work with Joanne Anne on what our legal ramifications can be. And so I don't know, I'm very passionate about this, but I'm also a little bit, you know, confused and, um,
Mr. Mayor, if I can.
Yes, Councilman.
This is, sorry, Chris Williams again. So I'm about to do something that my wife says is very annoying. I'm a very pragmatic person, okay? I, I just believe in a straight line of two from one point to the next. The only thing I, I would say to this is really simple. We definitely want to make sure that it's focused on pushing to understanding how we may have gotten to this point and, but how we can fix those points. That, that needs to stay focused on. And, and being that there's, uh, connection on timetable here, I think that part should, should stay focused on, um, about getting the work done. And my suggestion, because I have had discussions with our attorney on, on this. I've also talked to other outside sources. Uh, I think I spoke to Pastor Lily about that. I want also realistic solutions. You know, I don't want to tell y'all it's gonna be a pie in the sky from the city. We don't know what it's gonna look like. That's gonna be the work of the commission. But we want to make sure that it's realistic too. If you walk in here and tell us, or say, say this to council, and we legally cannot do that, that needs to be understood. And we can, we can walk with you to the state, we can walk, we can, we can advocate on the federal level about those, those restrictions that we have, but remember, please, and, and, and I know Mayor Sims remember this also, or anybody that served on council, our powers come from the state. Okay? And, and, and we, and some of those things that we just need to understand that we know what those restrictions are. I don't want you to waste, I don't want that commission to waste one second on proposing something that we just, we, we can't say, well, we can't do that, but we can ask the state. You know, I don't want you to waste that time, I want solutions that we can do with the city. I do believe there's opportunity that we can meet a, as the city, and I want to make sure that we hit every, every point of them that's possible. I know it is. So, I mean, just like we were able to come up with these other things that didn't exist before, uh, this body, there's another opportunity for us to see those challenges, and I trust it. I would just say, if nothing else, have a, have at least one good lawyer, uh, uh, I don't know what specialty he would have to have to understand that when it come, a municipal, uh, whatever, a specialty, but just need to have someone on that board that can say, listen, y'all, if, we could probably do this, but it's gotta come from somewhere else to, to, to allow us to do that. And just, just so you know that I'm, um, I'm being very practical on this. When we were doing some of the black remediation stuff, we had to get 225,000 technical assistance from an outside organization to help us work with our county and our state officials to get us to the point where we can do some of the things we're doing now. Couldn't do it before. We had to do that. So I just, that's, that's all I am, just saying that we want to make sure that it's, it's gonna be something that's gonna be beneficial to our citizens. Because as Councilman Holmes brought up, when he mentioned those areas, that's predominantly where I represent, and I live in there. And, and I've, I've, I've lived all my life there, and I know exactly what he's talking about. I know how hard it was, you know? And, and I want to see the difference too, definitely want to see the difference. I just want to make sure that we are focused, or that organization, uh, this commission is focused on what it's gonna do and that we don't get too varied off on stuff and we waste time, because people do need it. We do need it. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, can I?
Yes.
Close, I'm sorry, I know this has gone on.
Okay.
It's gone on a while. I see you, I want you to see me as well. And I wasn't gonna share, but I speak my mind because I can't do anything else. I want to disclose, my great-great-grandfather had eight slaves. My great-great-great-grandfather had 11 slaves. I know their names because of ancestry. My grandfather and my grandmother and my other grandfather and my other grandmother slung the N-word around daily, by the minute. My parents didn't, so I was taught better. So I tell you this to let you know, I see you, I hear you, I will vote for this. You're my brothers, you're my sisters. I won't vote for this because I owe you, I'll vote for it because it's the right thing to do. So, I honor you, I, it's my pleasure to vote for this. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Does anyone else who'd like to be heard? Okay.
I'd like to make, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Well, I, just some, some cleaning up stuff. So, manager, uh, Madam Manager, um, I know in part of our trying to figure this out, we've got other commissions that we do and, and staff. You all probably have the capacity to do some research, um, on some of these things in terms of who, what, when, where, and how. And council could ultimately approve all of that. Would love to hear you speak to that, but what I also think, I think two things can be true. I think, I don't think you have cons to tonight deciding that we're going to have a commission. The other thing that can be true is that in terms of figuring out the who, what, when, where, and how, can be something that we say, hey, in two weeks when we reconvene, if we've got some recommendations on that, let's deliberate and then decide on that. But I think the important thing, and I'm just thinking of all the incredible souls who showed up tonight because they want to see this work move forward. I think we could move forward with a resolve to have the commission decide in two weeks. If, Madam Manager, if you think that's enough time, I know we, we've been putting a lot of stuff to two weeks from now, but if you feel like that's enough time, um, for you all to, to bring us those thoughts and recommendations, then we can deliberate and look at that, maybe get it ahead of time to figure out the who, what, when, where, and how. We could even, and not to speak for Mayor Sims, but if she's able, um, just because I, I heard her speak so very clearly about everything here, if she's able to make herself available to maybe give some thought on, on some of those things there. So that way, when we get it back, whenever, whether we decide in two weeks or four weeks, we've got some real clear sort of thoughts on the logistics. But tonight, I, I think we can have a commission tonight, I, I don't see why we can't. That's kind of my thinking. And actually, I was about to make an alternate motion that's kind of to that effect.
You're certainly welcome to do that.
Am, am, am I welcome to do that?
Sure.
Thank you.
You have the floor.
So my alternate motion is that we, um, resolve to have, and I'm actually gonna borrow Councilwoman Peters' term. We resolve to have a one High Point commission with its why being that there are bad outcomes in communities of color, specifically in the African-American community, and that this commission needs to look at that, the history, and look to help us come up with solutions to address that. That's the why. But the logistics, the who, what, when, how, where, be something that we actually vote on. Maybe either in two weeks or four weeks, depending on where Madam Manager thinks they can get that from. But tonight, we've resolved to have the commission. That's my motion.
Second.
Okay.
That's what the remaining is?
So there's a, there's a motion and a second. So in effect, what we're, what we're now doing, just to be clear, is we're not, we're not voting on the specific wording of this. We're gonna spend the next two to four weeks figuring out what it's gonna be.
Yeah, and, and, and truth be told, they've got a great, I think, starting place in terms of logistics, which I think gets us to the conversation. You and Councilman Williams made great points in terms of some things are just not in the purview of council, and we need to have that sort of conversation and sort of how we choose members, we still gotta figure that out and who's being represented. I think there are a number of logistics in there that can be worked out, but the why is very clear to me. And, and the why is this big challenge of there are gross and terrible and distressing outcomes for black people. And we gotta fix that, that's just the why. Have a commission to do that, and then the logistics, we get recommendations on for further approval. And, Madam Manager, you think in two weeks, or you think we need four weeks to, for, for you to pull that together?
Councilmember Jefferson, it, I think that it would take us a little bit longer than two weeks to try to, try to pull that together. What, what's being proposed in the substitute motion is different than what the original resolution that was presented speaks to. I think that if you're trying to make sure that there is, um, buy-in and consensus around how the commission moves forward, you've gotta have some time to have some conversation with members from the NAACP and also members from the city to make sure that we're on the same page. The city council in its, um, authority could establish a commission, and they could establish a commission and appoint members in ways that we've appointed commissions in the past. But I think that what the conversation has been here is doing it in a way that's collaborative and in a way that the NAACP feels like their interests are being met and also the city as well. So I think that just having a staff group come back and present those options to you in two weeks would be doing the effort a disservice. So I think that if we really want to try to get the structure of the commission right in a way that council can support it and also members of the NAACP feel like they can support it, we would need a little bit more time.
Okay.
And, and I'm, and I'm happy to have our staff, um, identify some, some members that we think need to, to be at the table and, and to bring that, um, to you all, and we can have some conversations about that and work to have something back to you within those four weeks. But again, it's gonna be a combination of us having to have members of the NAACP sitting down with us to work out those details.
Yeah, that's, I mean, that's totally fine with me. I, I think if you come in four weeks and even if you haven't got the whole thing figured out, at least some updates help us.
Absolutely.
I think at this point, we just gotta ensure the ball doesn't drop, there's no gaps in us moving this forward and that we've already resolved that we will do the commission.
Okay.
Can I ask, does the NAACP feel like that's sweeping it under the floor? Is that acceptable? Or do you want action tonight?
Uh, there is some unreadiness about the proposal. However, I understand that it could possibly be a way forward. What it means though, in effect, is that the resolution as presented to the city council, right, is going to be voted down, right, um, in its entirety. And, and the substitute is that you're going to vote for a commission, which the details will be, uh, made, um, definite later, at a later point in history. But I, I just want to be clear that, um, from the discussion that I hear this evening is that the resolution as presented will not be passed. That in lieu of it, we have the proposal that was made by the council member at the end.
That's correct. If the substitute motion is approved, then no action will be taken on the earlier motion to approve the resolution as presented.
Right.
That's correct.
Okay.
Is there any other debate on the substitute motion?
I, I'm, I'm sorry, I don't want to be contentious. Yeah, I think that's just sweeping it under the rug. I mean, I think it's just pushing it down the road. I mean, I want to make sure that you all know, things change, things are happening. I don't want to sweep this under the rug. I want to vote for the original motion. I'm opposed to the, to the substitute, simply for the fact that it's pushing it down, kicking the can a little further down the road. So that's, that's all I have to say.
With due respect, Councilman Hudson, there, there seems to have been, um, comments without votes being cast or indications of which way people may go or may not. But there was more than a handful of questions, um, sitting out there that seemed to be important to the efficiency and effectiveness of this commission once if approved and in place. So, um, it's obviously gonna involve a government piece and a community piece. And, um, so I, I think, uh, wading through that prudently and carefully to have as much unanimous support as you can get is a, is a wise thing.
Yeah, I, as it's, like I said, as it's written tonight, it's, it's just not something I can support. But I'm, I'm happy that Councilman Jefferson made the suggestion that we do, do look at some parameters and some, um, you know, and take, take a longer look to try to tighten this up a little bit. And those were, that really addresses my concerns. I, I mean, I'll, I'll withhold final judgment till I see what comes out of the next, the next month. But I am willing to, to support your motion to, um, to take a, take a longer look and let's, let's flesh this out and get something that's a little more specific.
But the commission gets created tonight, though. That's, that's what, that's what the point is still, though.
That's right.
Yes.
That the commission is created.
That's what my understanding of that.
So the commission is created tonight, and in four weeks we'll get an update.
My objection was never to, to creating a commission. It was more about how that commission is gonna function and what, what is supposed to come out of that. What's, what are the parameters of what's gonna be studied and, and what are the, and, and an understanding, as Councilman Williams said, that, that whatever comes out of that, if it's gonna be effective, it has to be something that we're legally authorized to do. Otherwise, we're just wasting our time. You know? I mean, we're going, I'm, I don't want to say wasting our time, because the discussion is worth having, okay? But it, it's, it's, we're not, we're not wasting our time, but I, I just don't want us to come out of this and say, well, you guys have done a- us to come out of this and say, well, you guys have done a great job, but we can't help you. You know? So, um, Councilwoman Peters?
I just need to make sure that I'm clear on what I understand, what I am supporting, is that I do want to support an alternate motion saying that tonight, we vote on creating a commission. Now, in this, then after this, and after what it talked about, what the commission, and there are the ones that says the commission will focus on one high point, but then at the bottom, it says, uh, following the adoption of the attached resolution. So we are approving the creation of a commission, but are not adopting the resolution as written.
That's correct.
Okay. All right.
Okay. Is there any other questions or discussion?
Just really simply, just, just for the, for the, for the sake of forward momentum, we create the commission, even though they may work over, uh, over the, uh, the changes or whatever, they can go ahead and go ahead and get started on the, on the housekeeping pieces, right? Go ahead, do you get any appointments in place? Go ahead and get, we, we can still have something going forward.
I don't, I don't read it that way, maybe Councilman Jefferson would like to, to say, but to me, the specifics of how it's going to be made up and, and the duration and all that is what's, what's to be determined later.
Yeah, that's, that's being worked out. So, the resolution was provided by the branch, gives us at least a baseline to start the conversation, and then, as Madam Manager said, her staff, the branch of NAACP could actually work together on fine tuning the actual logistics. So today, we're voting to have the one high point commission. The logistics, we'll get recommendations on in four weeks. If it's updated and completely ready, we, we can vote on the logistics. If not, we, we may be able to adopt some of those things, depending on how ready it is. It may be that we can adopt how we're doing appointments and adopt what we get started on, but maybe we can't adopt timeline at that point.
Essentially, what, what we're agreeing to, if I can jump in, is we're, we're agreeing that a commission will exist.
Yeah.
And the, and then all of those details are going to be worked out, it's going to come back to us.
Okay. I, I mean, I'm, I, I get that, I, I do. It's, I don't know, I'm, I'm almost with Wes on the fence here, because it's, I want, I don't want to hinder support progress on at least the membership and, and the, and the individuals that's going to be selected for, um, the board. I, I don't know if there's any way that we can separate it from what the motion is saying, but I, I'm sorry, I just, I, I kind of feel that that's what's happening a little bit, you know what I mean? I mean, I, I, I want to move forward, but I, I don't want to restrict the work that they can do away from, you know, once the commission is created, what can those individuals, at least from the eight outside folk, can, can be approached and, and...
Well, so, so I'll, I'll tell you, in my conversations, and Mayor Sims coming to the podium, in my conversations, it was understood that, and really what I heard tonight is, you create the commission, and whatever answers we don't have, let's get it sort of figured out. Tonight, we're creating the commission, and the answers we don't have, we get that figured out. And who's going to figure that out, set city and NAACP branch. See what I'm saying? And that's, that's what that is. If, if while in the figuring out, they get to some, some understandings of things, I mean, hey, trust me, I, I don't want to slow it down either, Chris, but I want to get to a vote, and I want to see the work done.
Got you.
You know about that action.
I got you.
Is, is there any further discussion? I'm, I'm getting ready to call for a vote.
I know you are, but I need to say something before you do that.
Okay, I'll recognize.
Thank you so much. Um, I believe that based on what we originally submitted to this council and even to the, to the committee, was based on this resolution. Now, I understand that there's some unreadiness on the part of council, because there are pieces of this that you need to flush out. And at the end of the day, I still believe that if you're going to, number one, create a commission, one high point, which is not what we asked for, but that's okay, we asked for a commission, then the second piece of that needs to be, that commission has to be created in the spirit of the document we submitted to you. You can't leave that open to interpretation, because at that point, it's no longer our resolution, it's what council has decided to do. So you have to recognize the spirit of the document that we brought before you in, in our request and our ask as we move forward. Now, you may not want all components of this document, I get that, and that's something that has to be worked out during that four-week period or whatever that time is. But we have to act in the spirit of the resolution that we presented. We're not saying adopt the whole resolution at this point, it'd be lovely if you did, but I know that's not going to happen. So at the end of the day, what we need to do is look at this and say, in the spirit of the resolution that the NAACP presented to us, we will move forward with that commission. But you have to look at what's in this document and the components of it for us to move that forward. There's even a section under administrative provisions that answers your question, Councilwoman Williams, that says, you can appoint as, as much personnel as you would like to this commission, and they can keep the commission out of the weeds if it comes to that. So if there's legal assistance that is needed, you have a legal staff, they can come back and say, you guys have asked for this, but you can't have it because we can't do it. So let's change what that process is. But I believe that you cannot create this commission without looking at what the ask is. And there is an ask on the table that says, this resolution adopted by the local branch of the NAACP has to be taken into consideration as you create that commission.
Yeah, so I, I'll be clear to say on the motion that, I said, that document should definitely be taken into consideration during this four-week planning. So I, I do want to be clear about that, that's our baseline, like, that's where we start, and then we have discussions to figure out how we get it to what makes sense. Yeah.
But I just think it needs to be in your res, in your motion.
Your motion.
In the spirit.
In, in your motion, it has to say that, because otherwise, you guys are starting from scratch, and it becomes your document and not what we submitted.
Forgive me, Mayor Sims, I've never made a motion in the spirit of anything. I, I don't even know what that means.
Okay, well, I, I, if, if, I don't mean for you to take it that way, but what I am saying is that, at the end of the day, based on the way that you stated your motion, it overlooks this document. It overlooks this document. So you all can read it back, but it doesn't say, I'll reference this document at all.
Okay.
Okay.
So, can, can I say this, then? I'll make sure the motion's, and I'm trying to clean it up right.
You can, you can amend your motion.
So, so the motion is that we will create one high point commission, and then take the next several weeks to craft what this looks like in the spirit of the resolution presented by the NAACP, so that way, we can do this the right way.
Exactly.
Did, was, was that right?
Believe the second was.
Second.
Is, is that good?
It gets closer, okay.
First time for everything. Okay.
Thank you so much.
So there, there is a amended substitute motion, and a second on the floor. And so, th- this will come back to us hopefully in four weeks, uh, after being fleshed out for final action on what that commission will look like. The, uh, all the, is there any other form, uh, other discussion before we vote? Councilman Moore, you want to say it now? I, any other question?
Mr. Mays, Mr. Adams, is this, is that an acceptable motion?
With all due respect, um, it gets us closer, uh, but it was...
With all due respect, it gets us closer, right? Uh, we need to see ourselves in this resolution. It is the reason why we said reparations, is the reason why we list, mentioned the history, listed it. We need to see ourselves in that resolution. So as you move forward, right, we want you, when, when she says the spirit, right, we want you to focus. And the same way we focus on giving restitution to people who suffer from unfortunate things, whether it's negligence or criminal act, we identify who the victims are, and we direct the restitution to those individuals. And so, I want to be clear, right, that, um, this gets us closer, but not all the way there.
Uh, Mr. Mays, if you, when, when you, uh, say see ourselves in, in the resolution, in the document, that includes everybody in this room, correct?
Well, yes, because the situation we live here in is all of us.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
It's, it's all of us. And so, we can't have this conversation with just me in the room. Right? When I stand here and speak about reparations, I'm talking for my ancestors. And when I speak to you, I'm talking to you and to your ancestors. See, because the people that came before me could not have that conversation with your ancestors.
Yeah.
But we are charged with the responsibility today to have that conversation, and we do it together. Not separate, not apart. And when we talk about this community, it's the coming together of everyone in this community to lift everybody.
I, I, I appreciate that, I just wanted to make sure that point was clear, because if we're going to go down this road, then we'll need to go down it together.
Amen. Yes.
Okay. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak? All right. So what we're voting on is the amended substitute motion to create the commission. We're going to flesh out the details in the spirit as presented by the resolution of the NAACP. And I, I think I'll just call the roll on this one, um, rather than doing hands. Um, Councilman Holmes, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilman Johnson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Peters?
Aye.
Councilman Moore?
Aye.
Councilman Williams?
Aye.
Councilman Hudson?
Aye.
Councilman Jones?
Aye.
Councilman Jefferson?
Aye.
And the mayor votes aye. Vote is approved by a vote, it's, item is approved by a vote of nine to zero. So, um, next on our agenda is, are the community development committee items, and for that, I'll turn the meeting over to Councilmember Williams.
Thank you, Mayor. Maybe I'll give it a second.
Community Development Committee. Yep. There's that.
I know, I know, I'm just saying.
Land speed record, I'm telling you. Can I do what I can say?
We got, but we got to get there, we got to have that conversation.
No?
But you're not running, right?
I know, right?
I try.
I'm trying to give up, I must absorb.
I'm not next.
Okay. Um, first up, um, sorry, we ready?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Uh, the first item is item 2021406, ordinance of demolition of dwelling 905 Richardson Avenue. I'm going to turn it over, am I turning it over?
Lori.
Yeah, turn it over to Lori.
They told me I was not up next, I'm so lost right now. Um, and just to clarify, it's 908 Richardson? Is that, you said, I believe you said 905?
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought I said no.
Okay, just want to make sure we're on the same page here. All right, good evening again, Mayor City Council. Um, so tonight, the first property is 908 Richardson Avenue. We originally inspected this property, um, back on October 8th of 2019. Um, we received a complaint about, um, the hole in the roof. Um, we held a hearing on December 5th of 2019, um, and issued an order to repair or demolish, uh, with a compliance date of, um, February 3rd, 2020. Um, sorry, back up, no one appeared for the hearing. The property was, um, purchased by the current owner on November 17th of 2020. Um, we did record a list pendants on October 8th of 2020, prior to that purchase. Um, we found the current owner, Mr. Izzard, and, um, spoke with him. Um, he said he was aware of the violations and that he was just trying to finish up repairs on 910 Richardson. Um, he'd purchased three houses together. Um, he stated that he had some delays due to COVID, um, that were affecting his plans. Um, I then spoke to Mr. Izzard back on August 19th of this year, um, where I returned a call to Mr. Izzard, excuse me, uh, where he'd called me on August 19th, and I called him back on August 24th. Um, he still stated he was having issues with, um, getting contractors. He'd asked for, um, additional time, and he wanted to, um, send me something in writing. I did tell him it would be coming before city council, and that he would have the opportunity to speak. Um, I, to my knowledge, I've not received anything in writing from him, email or on paper, um, and I'm not sure if he, we did have to obtain a warrant to go and get the, the pictures of the inside of the house. His attorney directed him not to let us in, um, and I'm not sure if he's here or not
Thank you, Lori. So is, there's, so there's someone here to speak for this?
Yeah, I'm Mr. Izzard.
Okay, if you step up and give your name and address for the...
My name is Clarence Izzard, uh, my address is, uh, 13447 Provantay Drive, Windermil Florida. Uh, I was born and raised in Greensboro, North Carolina, in the housing projects. I'm a real estate, uh, uh, realtor, I mean, developer, part-time. My mission and passion in life is to help build safe, quality, affordable housing. So in November of 20, I purchased four homes on Richardson Avenue that I wanted to develop for decent public housing, safe housing. Uh, I started the process almost immediately, uh, in December. I'm showing you a sample of what we did on the very first home in 906. We got a, a stop work order from the city to apply for permits, which we did. It was a complete stall, I wasn't sure why. I was then told I need to have professionals only to do the job. Uh, we continued to try to get professionals to do the job, and they were all literally wiped out by COVID. So I had been in constant contact with the city enforcement office, I took the initiative to contact them, they didn't have to find my information. I wanted to keep them abreast on what I was trying to accomplish, which is create affordable housing in an underserved community. And then I got a call from her, very aggressively, saying she was not going to receive my documentation, that she was going to move forward for a demolition, and that's why I'm here today.
Any questions for the...
Mr. Izzard, um, excuse me, these, uh, the, the pictures that we're seeing here in the packet, this is the current state of 906?
That's 906, right next door to 908. That was our first project.
So how, um, how much, uh, would you say you've invested in this renovation to this point?
In that particular one, probably about $20,000.
$20,000?
Yes.
And Lori, this is, this is up for demolition?
Nope. The one next door, 908.
I believe, right, he, like I said previously, he's purchased a, a few properties. Um, there was, um, I did some research, um, on 906, um, since you don't have it written down here, but he did, oh wait, he said, um, I reviewed with, I'm going to just read it verbatim, the visitor notes. He does?
He has provided that.
Oh, okay, I haven't seen that, okay. Um, so I returned the call to Mr. Izzard, he did call me on August 19th, and spoke with him on August 24th. Mr. Izzard again stated that he was having a difficult time with contractors due to COVID. I advised him that I would, um, be taking this case to council on 906. If between these states, he's able to obtain permits and start repairs, we will work with him. I reviewed with him, um, that the permit for the gas packet 906 Richardson was not completed, and that, um, he stated that he was not aware of that. Um, and it was inspected and completed after we spoke on August 27th, 2021, and that the permit for 910 Richardson Avenue had not been completed yet. He made original application for that property on February 26th, 2021. And then this is 908 Richardson that we're talking about tonight.
Uh, Mr. Izzard, your, so this is, uh, Councilman Holmes, um, is the sole reason why you are, uh, have been unable to, uh, move 908, uh, in the same direction as 906, has it been, uh, availability of contractors' resources or, or permitting restrictions?
It's resources. Uh, yeah, we know we can probably get the permitted once we get the contract on board. Um, we just needed the assistance of time, and she didn't want to offer that at all. I've been the one aggressively letting them know what I was trying to do with these properties from day one. But she presented it in the spirit that I did not want to keep the community safe. You can see from my, my statement, all my life, that's all I've done is kept people safe, all my adult life.
So, um, Joanne, I think, uh, this question, you may be able to answer this, um, in terms of legally, I guess, credit for, for, for effort, is there any way that we can offer some type of, uh, redress of time? You know, seeing, seeing the effort that, uh, Mr. Izzard has put into, to, to 906, if that's, if his intention is to, to move 908 and 910 in the same direction?
And 910 have all four. They're going to have to look better than 906.
Is there...
Yes, Council, you can, um, offer more time.
Yes, Council, you can offer more time. I handed Ms. Luce Moore the same packet that you guys had because I wanted her to be able to see what you had and respond. It sounded like it was in the same address that she had brought for you tonight. So I, I, might I suggest that you hear from Ms. Luce Moore what she has seen with the others, the timing and everything, so that you'd have.
Quick question before she speaks.
Yes, sir.
As Councilman Moore, somewhat familiar with the process you're going through. The subcontractors you may have employed on 906, would they not continue to work with you on 908?
They would have, but they were just subcontractors. They are not licensed. We did cosmetic work, a lot of cosmetic work on 906, which didn't require a license.
So the contractors are the people you hope to have do the work? Are you a general contractor?
I am not, no. But I am trying to find a general contractor who would do that work and it's been nearly impossible.
Well, I can understand that, but, but, but you got the work done on the first house?
Well, I did. Yeah, because none of those require license to get it done or permits.
And, and they passed all inspections?
Absolutely. And Housing Authority. I even reached out to Housing Authority, making them aware of my mission and passion, spoke with Ms. McGill, and Housing, Section 8 passed it as well.
And you currently live in Florida?
I, I do, but I was born and raised in Greensboro. My sister lives, she's been here for 30 years. This is my home.
I understand.
Yeah.
But, but how much time are you spending here trying to secure these contractors and things?
I own a condo in Archdale. I've been living in there for six months.
Ms. Luce Moore?
In Archdale, on Meadows, Meadow, Meadow, Melamed.
I got some questions for Ms. Luce Moore. The, the list pendants that was filed in October of 2020?
Before I bought it.
What was, what was stated on that, on that list pendants? It was a list pendants for what?
Excuse me, copy of the list pendants right here if you'd like to see it. What we attached when we take it to the courthouse is it states that the City of High Point Community Development and Housing Code Enforcement Division has a case against Carlin Ellison, 804 Mobile Street, and has the address listed at the bottom, it's 908 Richardson, and we attach a copy of the hearing sheet to it. And that is what is recorded and it's stamped October 8th of 2020.
Do you know how long this roof has been caved in on this house?
No, sir.
I was asking her. Sorry.
When we received the complaint and started our case, it was in, excuse me, October 8th of 2019, we made our first inspection.
So we're two years.
So it's two years.
I mean, two years that we know about it.
Right.
Because that doesn't look recent to me. And there's a wall that's bowed out too on the side, it appears.
Whole wall missing, I believe.
There's no walls missing, it's just bowed out, as he mentioned.
That, that's the back of the house. That is the back of the house.
908?
Yes.
Yeah, I, I don't see how this house could possibly be salvaged.
And just to state, I'm, I'm not sure what his conversations he's had with building inspections, my understanding and my knowledge of what repairs can be made by landlord in the state of North Carolina is they cannot, property owners cannot make certain repairs in the state. They cannot do mechanical work, plumbing work, and electrical work. They can do some of the building work. If it exceeds $30,000 though, they have to hire a general contractor. So that, I'm not sure if he's had that conversation with them or not. As far as, like I said, I don't believe it's referenced in here that any permits have been applied for, for 908 Richardson to, to make any repairs. Have you applied for any permits?
No, we're doing 910 and 910 and a half. We put new roofs on both of those properties. We got the stop work order.
And when did you finish 910?
The roof?
The house. Oh, is that what you supplied pictures of here?
Yeah, we're applying for permits.
An order to repair or demolish was issued January 3rd.
It was issued January 3rd of 2020, yes, with a compliance date of February 3rd of 2020. Can I ask another question, just so I can try and gauge some, so the property that this is that you submitted, because I've not, it's, this is 906? Okay. And the only thing that 906 had permits for was for the gas pack?
That is correct.
Okay. And you completed that at what date?
I think we wrapped it up in March, March or April.
Okay, and then 90, 910 has been repaired?
No, we started on 910 and we got the stop work order for permits.
Right, so that's not been completed yet because you have to provide information for that permitting. So you plan, you want to finish 910 before you can finish 908? And this is the state of 908 at this time in this neighborhood. And the fire department did place, just as a disclaimer, oops, I don't have it on this picture, but the fire department did also place a red X on this property that they will not enter it if it catches on fire due. Tommy is still here, you can clarify that? That's my understanding of the red X. I'm not opposed to going back and meeting with him, but I, in my dealings, as far as, if we have to wait for 910 to be completed in the permitting and then for the 908, I think this is just not good for the neighborhood.
I'm going to make a motion to approve the ordinance. I don't see how this house can possibly be salvaged, given the amount of damage that it has. And I think we ought to go ahead and approve the ordinance tonight. And if he wants to go get a contractor or whatever and try to get to work on this thing, come back to us in 30 days and let us know if he's got a plan for it. But I don't see any reason why we shouldn't go ahead and approve the ordinance tonight.
Do you understand, you actually have, the ordinance go forward, you have 30 days to like secure your, your.
Contract.
GC, and you can have a conversation back with Lori, Lori's department? And inform us that you do have a GC and a timetable on it and then we can, we can work with that. But as far as it goes, tonight, the ordinance goes forward, that we will be moving forward with it. All right, I'm going to second the motion, I mean, second one.
Okay, there's, there's a motion and a second for approval of the ordinance. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, I just.
Yeah, I understand that. I have 30 days to go ahead and secure a general contractor, but also communicate with her.
Sure, you just need to move, you need to move quickly.
Okay, and that's why I was asking, rather than be here, she wanted no part of that, which really bothered me, yeah.
And just to clarify also, that obtaining the permit does not stop the process. North Carolina permits are valid for 12 months. Just because a permit is issued, we're looking for permits to be issued and repairs to begin and to make progress, just to be clear. Okay. And I'm not opposed to working. We have tried to work with you and, and this was already being prepared, so that's why it came before City Council.
Councilman Jones?
I know, it's part of this government. But Lori does a great job and it's just processing procedures, but I'm sure you'll.
Councilman Jones, you have something?
Yeah, I was just going to add, I mean, I think those other properties may be salvageable and I'm not trying to tell you to run your business, but I run a couple. I would, I would just demo that one and move on because it's not, you're not going to get your money back out of it. You have to make the decisions that are good for your business, that are profitable. That's not a profitable one.
And I, I make that consideration. I, I just needed somebody to, to work with me in the process, that's all. And I couldn't get that.
Okay. There's a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor of approval of the ordinance, please signify by saying aye. Is there anyone opposed? Okay, that motion passes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is item 2021-407, ordinance demolition of dwelling 1, let's see, 1,004 Prospect Street Adoption, sorry. Yeah, 1,004 Prospect Street Adoption of Ordinance. I will turn it over to Lori once again.
This property on 1,004, excuse me, 1,004 Prospect Street, we did an inspection on April 30th of 2019. We received a complaint from the fire department on this property. The current owner, Mr. Body, purchased it on April 22nd of 2020. We had the list pendants recorded on June 13th of 2019. We held a hearing on June 3rd, 2019, and no one appeared for the hearing. We issued an order to repair or demolish on June 3rd, 2019, with the compliance date of July 3rd, 2019. Again, in this same situation, Mr. Body purchased it after the list pendants was recorded. He did apply for a building permit on June 19th of 2020. The property was sold by the original owners, Alan and Tommy Davis, on October 23rd, 2019, to J H Commercial Properties LLC, who then in turn sold it on April 22nd, 2020, to the current owner, Mr. Body. Stop work order was issued on building, by building inspections on May 19th of 2020. The owner applied for the permit. It was issued on 7/24/2020, but did not include any work for trades, electrical, plumbing, or mechanical. And the permit noted that the licensed contractors needed to be added to the permit prior to any of that work commencing. On October 9th of 2020, the inspector spoke with Mr. Body, who stated he planned to repair the house first and then move to 1,000 Prospect. He also had recently fired his contractor on January 7th of 2021. The inspector spoke to Mr. Body again, who stated he was working on another project inside the city, would be finishing it up in the next few weeks. It would move to the four properties he owns on Prospect and that he intends to rent them on March 31st, 2021. An inspector called Mr. Body. He told the inspector he was having a hard time finding cowork, excuse me, coworkers for COVID, due to COVID. As of December 7th, excuse me, September 7th, 2021, no inspections have been requested on the permit that was issued. And an inspector with the building inspections did meet with Mr. Body on the property on July 7th of 2020 to review the work to be done and that he would need to add additional contractors to the permit.
Thank you, Lori. Is there any questions for staff? Or is there anyone here to speak for or against this item? In that case, I make the motion to approve item 2021-407, ordinance demolition of dwelling 1,004 Prospect.
Prospect. Second. There is a motion and a second for approval of the ordinance. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Anyone opposed? Okay, that motion is approved by a vote of nine to zero.
Last is item 2021-408, ordinance demolition of dwelling 1615 Long Street. Lori?
Okay, so this property, very similar situation, but it has slightly different outcome possibly. We did the inspection on June 3rd of 2019 at 1,000, excuse me, 1615 Long Street. We received a complaint about the condition, that it was unsecured. The property was transferred August 5th of 2021 to the current owner, DK Investments One LLC. We did have a list pendants recorded on April 7th of 2020. We issued, we held a hearing on June 17th of 2019. No one appeared for the hearing. An order to repair or demolish was issued on July 17th of 2019. In your notes, as you can see, and I'll try to, I'll save this one because it's, again, just where property was transferred within the same ownership, different LLCs. But the owners did come in today and apply for permits to do the demolition work. I do not believe it was issued quite yet. I can double check tomorrow. I'm still bringing it because, for an ordinance, because the owners could just stop and not actually do the demolition. So that's why I'm continuing to bring it here.
Thank you, Lori. Any questions for staff? Or is there anyone here to speak for or against this item? In that case, I move forward with the, move for approval of item 2021-408, ordinance demolition of dwelling 1615 Long Street.
Okay, there's a motion and a second for approval of this item. Is there any discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of approval of the ordinance, please signify by saying aye. Is there anyone opposed? That motion passes. All right.
All right.
Okay. Under planning and development, I'll be handling those items. There are several regular agenda items and a few public hearings. First item is 2021-409, minor amendment to site plan for special use permit 16-02 regarding Wesleyan Education Center.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, very briefly, Herb Shannon, senior planner with the Planning and Development Department. This is a request from Wesleyan Education Center to update their special use master plan for their school at the intersection of Johnson Street and Sandy Ridge Road. This site obtained approval in 2013 and had a binding site plan. They've put in their educational fields and prior to starting on their school, they just wanted to do three minor changes. Relocate the amphitheater to the southern portion of their site. Put in a fitness outdoor rope course in the southern portion of the site and add a teaching barn with classrooms. All of these improvements are in areas that were previously for parking, so it's not expanding the limits of development. Staff has evaluated this request and notes that it does meet the requirements for a minor amendment and we recommend approval of this request. The applicant is here if you have any additional questions and including your package or site plans if you have questions as to the location of those improvements. I would note that all these improvements on the southern portion of the site are either next to streams or a transmission line, so there is sufficient separation from the abiding neighborhood.
Where are they going to teach in the barn?
You don't want to know.
The applicant's representative is here.
Are we bringing back cowboys?
We'll hear from the applicant.
Good evening. My name is Luke Dickey with Stimmel Associates, the site plan preparer for Wesleyan. So 601 North Trade Street, Suite 200, Winston-Salem, North Carolina. So yeah, the teaching barn is kind of more for bringing in kind of equestrian. So probably some horses to help in a teaching environment, so they'll have, they'll partner with groups to be able to come in and be able to do that with them. So it's not really fully stapling there in that location, but it's to help them be able to bring that program from all site.
Thank you very much. Okay, not a public hearing item. It's just a minor amendment, so is there any discussion among the group? Okay, I'm going to go ahead and make a motion then to approve this, this item. There's a second, there's a second from Councilwoman Williams. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Anyone opposed? Okay, that motion passes by a vote of nine to zero. Okay. Next item. This is a request to initiate some zoning map amendments for the airport overlay. Are you speaking to that?
Yes, sir. Good evening. It's Mayor, Members of Council, Chris Andrews with the Planning Department. This item is a request to initiate zoning map amendments that were related to the airport overlay district. You may recall that former Director Burnett presented counsel, presented to council at the July 19th special meeting, the findings of the most recent Part 150 Airport Overlay Study. Those are attached for your, your review or your information. However, the request tonight is simply to request to initiate the rezoning process required to amend that overlay district. There's no request or approval based on the recommendations from July's presentation. What will follow is, is public notification, as well as the proposed amendments, as well as community meetings related to those, to those changes. The details have not been finalized as to how the public outreach will, will go at this point, but this initiation gives staff some added confirmation to continue that process. And this is very similar to the initiation process that the comprehensive zoning map amendment processes has followed. And staff will come back to council with a formal zoning map amendment, as well as probably some text amendment and possible land use plan amendments as a result of that airport overlay. But we need to begin the public process to be able to do that.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? Okay. Then I make a motion for approval of this item, 2021-410. Is there a second? Second about Councilman Jefferson. Any discussion on this item? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Anyone opposed? Okay, that motion passes by a vote of nine to zero. Next item is resolution of intent to establish a public hearing date of November 1st to consider the voluntary non-contiguous annexation of approximately 74 acres along the north and south sides of Cox Avenue and west of Jackson Lake Road. This is Guilford County Tax Parcels 161559 and 157930, and I move for approval. So motion and a second for approval of the resolution of intent. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Anyone opposed? Okay, that motion passes. Next is another resolution of intent to establish a public hearing date of November 1st, 2021 to consider a voluntary contiguous annexation of approximately 27 acres located southeast corner of West Wendover Avenue and Penny Road. Property site is also known as Guilford County Tax Parcels 196671, 196672, 170002, 170004, 170005, and 170006. I move for approval. Is there a second?
Second.
Second about Councilwoman Williams. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Anyone opposed? Okay, that motion passes by a vote of nine to zero. We have several items on for public hearing tonight. The first one is street abandonment case 21-01, Fattessa High Point, Inc. For that, or for staff?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of Council, Chris Andrews again with the Planning Department. Staff did receive an application for a street abandonment by Fattessa High Point to abandon the entire width of a 60-foot unnamed and unimproved right of way that is adjacent to the northeastern property line of Fattessa's property at 200 Southwest Point Avenue. This is located in the southwest portion of, just southwest of downtown High Point. The right of way was recorded as part of a plant in 1978 and was subsequently dedicated to the city and accepted with the intention of constructing a street. No street was ever, was ever constructed. The city's technical review committee reviewed this request and stated no objections. However, there were some public and private utility service providers that requested two easements that would. that would, would remain in place. The Planning and Zoning Commission reviewed this request at their August 24th public hearing where they recommended approval of this request by a vote of seven to zero. If there's any questions of staff, I would be happy to answer.
Any questions for staff? Is there anyone here from Fattessa? Would you like to be heard on this, or?
No, sir. I'm just here to answer any questions if.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone have any questions for the applicant? Motion to approve. Okay. Well, there's a public hearing, so. But I'll go ahead and accept the motion. And second, is there anyone else here who would like to speak on this item? I think just about everybody else is staff, except for a couple of folks. All right. Is there any discussion among council members on the motion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of approval of this item, please signify by saying aye. Is there anyone opposed? Okay, that motion passes. All right. Next item is a public hearing for zoning map amendment 21-15 Furniture Avenue LLC.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Herb Shannon, once again. This is a request to rezone a 4.8 acre parcel from its current conditional use general business and conditional use light industrial, both which was established in 1994. The applicant's requesting rezoning to a conditional zoning GB district to alleviate some code violation issues. The applicant was cited by our enforcement department for developing a statue garden in a watershed critical area without land development disturbance permit, and also for violating zoning conditions that were established in 1994 that prohibited any type of outdoor display. The applicant has, is proposing to update the zoning conditions to carry forward all the previous conditions from 1994, except for the prohibition on outdoor display. In evaluating this request, there is a stream that runs through the site, and the main purpose of that condition was to not have any type of display area along the Business 85 corridor. That corridor plan proposes to keep that area as much as natural as possible. Due to the location of the stream on the site, the proposed area where the applicant is, wants to do the outdoor statue garden is facing internally. The site abuts a quarry, a cemetery, and the deep river, so allowing that outdoor display facing internally to the site would not negatively affect any adjacent property owners, and staff is recommending approval. The P&amp;Z reviewed this request at their August public hearing and recommended approval, and included in your staff report is a consistency statement and reasonable statement that the Planning and Zoning Commission is forwarding to you. There were no speakers in opposition at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting.
Thank you. Is there anyone here from the applicant who'd like to be heard? Yes, sir. If you could come forward to the lecture and give us your name, you'll be recognized.
May I take this off?
You can take it off.
Yes, sir. Mayor, City Council, Members of the City of High Point. My name is George Yose. I'm the owner of the IMS. I've been an active member of High Point for about 35 years. My company has always had a presence here. I wind up spending several months, a year up here, but I winded up moving to North Carolina for a second residence. We originally owned the Hamilton and Kivit Corner, which was a very beautiful strategic corner. I winded up selling it to the Markor Company who built that beautiful white building. So it was a big deal for us because during the time when Vegas was coming into High Point, and I really don't want to waste all your time tonight because I know how much of a night you've had, but it, it's been important to me. I was able to hold on to the property, and I had a lot of stress. I had originally a dream to develop that building, and I started constructing it. I wasn't able to financially finish the second, third stories. I winded up selling it, and then I reinvested the money down on Furniture Avenue. And Furniture Avenue is a unique, it was a dream, but it was a very viable situation. High Point, and I've been in retail furniture as well, High Point across the whole country has recognition as the furniture capital of our country. And someone had the vision to go out to that area and say, you know, we're going to do a billion dollars in retail sales for the city of High Point. Now, Furniture Land South, which is across the street in Jamestown, does a big job over there. But I saw an opportunity to buy a beautiful property that had potential. I bought the property across the street from me as well because that was actually supposed to be a Claussenner furniture store, and he never built it. It's got a problem on the property because it's got the stream running through it, so you have a lot of eerie, you can't really use. Well, I had, I had always been a company that sold outdoor specialty pieces like garden fountains and gazebos and things, and we always were on the cover of the High Point newspaper for having something spectacular at our corner over there. In fact, we winded up selling the Neptune Fountain to a park in Arcadia, which was probably the most expensive thing High Point ever sold. And we're, you know, we're known for having some specialty things. So I told my guys, I said, go across the street and put those fountains up there. That'll look good. They might be able to see it from the highway. And I had got a little nervous. I said, you know, it's not going to look good without a concrete pad. So I brought in a contractor, and I'm not claiming I did it right. I don't know. But I asked him. I said, do we need a permit to put a concrete pad on this property? And he said, no, you're far enough from the watershed. You're fine. I've been doing this for a long time. Well, it turns out that the combination created the violation, which the city has been very helpful trying to help me fix. I think, and we are a pretty good sales tax contributor at the base, but I think there's a lot of potential over there. We are getting a good amount of business. It's been tough with the pandemic and supply, and everything is a nightmare in our industry right now. But, I mean, I believe in it. So I appreciate the support. I'd ask that you approve it and allow me to have a little bit of a garden center out there, little decorations. It's nice tasteful things, too.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions for the applicant? Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Is there anyone here to speak for or against this item? Okay, hearing none. I'm going to make the motion to approve this item, and I'm going to state that zoning map amendment 21-16 for the requested CZ GB zoning is supported by the Community Regional Commercial Land Use Classification of the adopted land use plan. Furthermore, because development activity will be oriented toward Furniture Avenue and watershed standards will limit the intensity of built-upon area, it would be reasonable to permit some limited outdoor retail display activity at this location. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second for approvals. Is there any discussion?
I'd just like to say thank you. I appreciate you staying, knowing that you had favorable approval through this rather long meeting. Appreciate your years here in High Point. Yeah, I understand.
But I hope your, I hope your stomach's not growling too much.
But we wish you nothing but success out there.
Yes. Thank you. Thank you for doing business in High Point. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Is there anyone opposed? That motion passes. Thank you very much.
And if anyone hasn't been out there, y'all should go because he's got some really cool stuff.
Is it the kind of place I should not take my wife to?
I mean, it's, I mean, it's some really cool stuff. Yeah. Thank you.
All right, I'm a little worried. Okay, next item is zoning map amendment 21-16, which is a resolution of the City of High Point for zoning map amendment for a bunch of properties.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Herb Shannon, once again. This is a continuation of the comprehensive zoning map amendment project, where staff is evaluating various areas of the city. Tonight, we're focusing on some land off of Baker Road and East Fairfield. The first is a neighborhood off of Nant and Gaines Avenue. It's almost all single-family, but the zoning is multifamily. There was concern with development being placed in that area, putting an apartment complex in the middle of an established single-family neighborhood. So staff is recommending rezoning an area from the RM 16 district to the R5 district to more accurately reflect how that area has been developed for the past 40 years. The second is dealing with a condominium property off of Belmont. In 1998, it received zoning approval. Only one part of that condo had conditions. Those conditions had been met, so staff is just recommending removing those conditions. So instead of being conditional use, RM 16, it's just RM 16. And finally, off of Allen J. Road, in 2010, a mosque received zoning approval for that location, but with the update of the zoning ordinance, that institutional district is more intended for large campus-like settings. So staff is recommending rezoning the site to the RM 16 district. It will still allow that religious institution, but it's more accurately reflects how that area is zoned and developed. The Planning and Zoning Commission reviewed these requests at their August public hearing and recommended approval and forward the consistency and reasonable statement to you. I would note, we sent out early notices this summer and also zoning notices. We received about 80 phone calls, but once staff explained to the residents the intent, they were all in supportive, support of this request.
Thank you. We are the applicant, so we've heard, we've heard from the applicant. Is there anyone present who would like to speak on this item? Okay, seeing no one, I will make a motion for approval of the item and state that the zoning map amendment is consistent with the city's adopted policy guidance because the zoning map amendments for these residential neighborhoods and institutional uses are supported by goal number one of the land use plan, which speaks to encouraging development that enhances and preserves established neighborhoods. Furthermore, the amendments are needed to match the manner in which these neighborhoods are developed and to remove unneeded restrictions on the properties. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, seconded by Councilman Johnson. Is there any discussion on this item? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of approval of the item, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? That motion passes by a vote of nine to zero. Next, we have several items on our general, general business agenda, actually just two. One is a resolution of support for reelection of Randy McCaslin to the Electric City Board, Electric City's Board of Directors for a three-year term, and I move for approval. Is there a second? Seconded by Mayor Pretend Moore. Any discussion on this item?
We're not going to ask any questions, Randy.
Keep doing a good job. Keep our rates down.
I'll do my best.
All right.
I want to go do tour.
Yeah, we've been talking about it for years, to visit the plant.
I'm not sure you can pass the background test.
We'll save pictures for you, Monica.
Got a fake ID. No kidding.
Yeah, I wouldn't say that real loudly because you definitely won't pass the background test. Okay, all those in favor of approval of this item, please can, please signify by saying aye. Anyone opposed? That motion passes by a vote of nine to zero. We've already done the reappointments. There's one item impending. You're just such a sport to stay around. Man. Do we need to actually vote to take this out of pending? Yes, we do. Yeah, I will make a motion to take this item regarding our banking service provider out of pending. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Holmes. Is there any opposition to pulling this item out of pending? Anyone opposed? That motion passes by a vote of nine to zero. Okay.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Members of the City Council. This is an item that was postponed from the September 6th, or August 16th meeting. Every five years, staff goes out, does an RFP for banking services. The decision is ultimately, obviously, councils to award the contract. The purpose of five years is to ensure that we get the most competitive rates that we can. And also, if we decide to change banks, that the investment is amortized over that life of the contract rather than that redoing that investment every couple of years or so. I do want to give a brief overview of the RFP process. We sent our RFP out to 13 banks that had a location in the city. We received seven back. A committee of customer service and finance staff evaluated those RFPs. This is just the written response that, you know, to our RFP. We invited the top two scorers in for a demonstration phase. After the scores were tallied from customer service and finance staff, as well as user feedback from those that would actually use the banking system outside of just the committee, Bank of America received a higher score. So as a reminder, staff's recommendation is to continue our relationship with Bank of America. We are satisfied with their customer service that we're receiving. There have been several technology improvements, especially on their online system. There are several things we can do now that we couldn't do five years ago, and they have several products in the pipeline that will make us more efficient and, and continue to add value to this relationship. As one, part of the outcome of this RFP process is that there are no analysis fees for the first year. So that's a calendar year of January through December. And they are proposing to add an additional courier credit to us so that we no longer have to have park rangers carrying our deposits from North Point to City Hall for the main courier. So there is another benefit there. The estimated cost difference over the five-year agreement between the two banks that came in for the demonstration round is approximately $10,000 a year. Implementation and conversion costs were previously given to council at about a $25,000 to $30,000 range. So I will say that we were not proposing a change at the time, so we used an estimate that sounded reasonable to us that we had uncovered from prior RFP processes. We know there's going to be some programming changes, right? We knew there was some conversion cost. It seemed reasonable. And then we also asked you to consider the workload of IT, customer service, finance staff. To address some of the concerns we heard from council at the last meeting, I did want to point out that we are by no means, and you all are by no means just always going with a larger bank. There have been three banking relationships approved by this city council in the last year and a half. Two of those were to Pinnacle Bank, two bond issuances that total more than $31 million. On the other side, Bank of America received one installment financing agreement during that same period of time. So we are doing our best to work with other banks through RFP processes, through competitive processes, as well as, you know, making sure that we're engaging with all the banks in the community whenever we can. I do want to go over the cost of transition. If we were to go with a new bank, there was about 10 staff members that put a couple dozen hours into coming up with these costs, including reaching out to third-party vendors when necessary. In total, we're looking at a four to six-month transition period between the two banks. And really, we're going to have to keep our, I would not be comfortable closing our Bank of America, America account, at least until June or so. We, we have lots of partners that directly deposit to us, and I trust most of them to update the information, but especially the, the second half of our ARPA money coming in in May, I don't want the chance for $11 million to bounce back to the feds. So we would probably keep it open long. We did define the transition, as well as try to calculate staff hours that would be dedicated to this. There's a defined phase, a design phase, a deliver phase, and a review phase. Just with any other implementations, pretty common terminology you all may be familiar with. In all, we totaled about 1,259 staff hours to complete this project. Direct costs of consultants, so the big one up there is RPI, who handles our, really any pre-programming that happens in our ERP system. So this is a very delicate process that is going to have a lot of connections throughout our ERP system and our billing system. Our IT group, our IT systems and development manager is here. He will tell you they support a lot of systems, right, for the city. They don't necessarily have the expertise in-house to make sure that everything is managed, that the change is managed precisely. They will be working alongside of RPI, and any approvals have to go through them. But RPI is doing this, you know, for other localities that have our Lawson ERP system, that have Kianta. So some of this is going to be done in-house, but there is a outside component as well. And then there's a couple other direct costs associated with keeping the Bank of America checking account alive while we transition. And then there's a, a small charge in there for reprogramming our check 21 machine that, you know, eats all the checks and deposits them into our account. I also wanted to highlight some of the IT projects that we felt would be disturbed by this conversion at this point. The big one up there is the Lawson ERP upgrade. It's, it's been coming for a while. We've done small upgrades, but now we're at the phase where we're actually going to be potentially making sure that Lawson and Infore can continue to service, or if we're actually, we'll go out for another ERP system, another implementation. So these are all worthwhile projects, but I do want to point to that one as being a big one. Approximately 260 hours of the design and deliver phase are, are just our IT staff having to support us through this transition, which is not a project that's currently on, on their list to do. I do have our, like I said, an IT manager. I have our treasury manager. Bob Martin is with us in spirit. He didn't make it to the meeting, but we can surely address the customer service questions you all may have as well.
Oh, he's here. He snuck in. Sorry. He's here.
I thought it was the ghost.
Yeah, and, and purple. And I guess I just didn't see him come in. Right. Sorry. So we're here to answer any questions you have.
Any questions for staff?
Bobby, yes, it's Councilman Holmes. Could you go back to the, um, design slide? Yeah. So these, these are, these two separate entities. So these are, these two separate entities would be needed to make this transition happen. So we're not talking about 55. We're talking about $130,000 plus dollars.
That's correct. So I wanted you to be able to see the direct cost, and then you'd be able to see the staff time. So that top part is staff time. I hope that we're all still employed here in the next four to six months, so you're going to pay that regardless. But that is time above and beyond what we've already, you know, are putting towards other projects. And I will say, there's no director time in there, right? We're here, we're going to, you know, see whatever projects through. This is, these are the managers and the analysts that have to do this above and beyond the many other things that they should be working on.
When we made the transition years ago to Bank of America from wherever we were, did we encounter these same type of situations and obstacles?
I'm sure we did. So I think we switched from Wachovia. There was a policy prior where the city was, and I don't know if we were unique at the time, but we were moving our deposits every few years, right? 2004 was the last time that happened, and I think since then, our systems have surely gotten more complicated and more connected. So, and third-party IT costs have probably doubled in the 17 years, too. So it's certainly gotten more expensive. There are more connections that have to be made. One thing I want to be clear is, we are not, we're not saying we'll never switch banks because of this obstacle, right? If there was a problem with customer service, or if another bank had a better technology and I really felt like we've got to have this to serve the citizens, I would tell you, I think we've got to do something about that, you know? We're not, we're not here to say this is never going to be a worthwhile project whatsoever. Just in this, in this case, the other bank was very, came very aggressively on price, which is one of the big factors that we're looking at here.
Can you, your evaluation criteria, I see Bank of America is 95 out of 100, or evaluation score is 74 out of 80. What is, how did you, what is the calculations behind this? How do we arrive at this score?
Sure. So the RFP response is primarily checking boxes. Do they meet the minimum requirements? Are they registered at the LGC? Are they, help me out, Ashley, what are some of the other recommendations? But it's very much checking boxes, right? And then, you know, do they have these other technologies that we're interested in? Are they able to do ACH and all that? So that is purely scoring their response, right? We haven't even talked to the bank at this point. The demonstration phase is when they get to come in, and they get to show us all those things they talked about, and we actually get to ask questions, and they walk us through typical transactions. And our accountant that does the reconciliation gets to ask questions and things like that. So it's a lot more personal, and that's really where they have the opportunity to show what they can provide.
So you had a RFP response, and then you had a performance-based evaluation based on actual live scenario, operational-wise?
Correct. And that was still a sales pitch, too, right? So there's, they're obviously using data that they've got on a server somewhere, and they just want to demonstrate it for us. But they are, that's their opportunity to talk directly to staff and sell them on the product, and also just demonstrate that they can do the basics of what they said they could do on paper.
Any talks with Pinnacle about any innovation they may have down the road that may change our mind about possibly working with them? Is, did we talk to them about some of the deficiencies that they had in their proposal or evaluation?
We did share with them where they were outshined in certain areas by Bank of America, and it was not anything they were surprised about, right? It was more on the technology side, the efficiency, especially of their payment consolidator, their online tools. Right now, you know, there's things we can do through Bank of America's cash portal that we're told by Pinnacle we'd have to pick up a phone and call. And that's not necessarily a feature when you're working for, when you're working for efficiency and you want to be able to keep the day rolling, right? There were also certain time restrictions with Pinnacle, so we'd have to catch things earlier in the day. If a customer put an extra zero in their payment, they would have less time to call us to get it reversed. So there were some, certain things like that we were worried about would affect customer service. With all that said, we're going to look at them again in five years, I'm sure. I hope that they'll, you know, provide a response in five years, just like any other bank that's listed. Thank you.
So you are still recommending Bank of America?
That's correct. That is still staff's recommendation.
Did you speak with representatives since we put this in pending from both banks again?
Not, well, I guess, yes, we did reach out because Bank of America obviously wanted to know if it had been approved, and we shared some of the concerns. We told them we were coming back in a month, and I'm sure they listened to the YouTube audio to hear what the comments were. We also spoke with Mr. Randy Carter at Pinnacle Bank again. He shared some concerns about the cost side of things, wanted to make sure we weren't saying that Pinnacle was charging us $25,000 to $30,000, or that we were having to upgrade to some new technology in order to utilize them. So I do want to be clear on that, that the conversion costs are not unique to Pinnacle, and that, I shouldn't say that, some of the details, right, are going to be unique to Pinnacle, but overwhelmingly, the costs are going to be there when we convert to another bank.
So just looking at your RFP evaluation score, if you were to say we were going to look at First Citizens, those conversion costs would be much higher dealing with First Citizens than with Pinnacle?
It's impossible to know that without getting the 10 people together and looking at what outside.
Hypothetically, hypothetically, if you're looking at the RFP score.
All the RFP response says is who we think, based on paper, could do the job best. I would hate to say that First Citizens might have, they may have worse technology issues, or they may have better technology than even Bank of America. They, it's just impossible to have all seven people come in for an evaluation and evaluate it in that way. But I would say, there's no reason to think it would be any more or less expensive right off the bat than the conversion that we've estimated.
Any other questions for staff? Okay, hearing none, I'll make a motion for approval of this item. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Wait, what's the motion?
A motion to approve.
Oh, I probably should have read, "Staff is recommending," "The Financial Services Department recommends that city council select Bank of America for the city's primary banking services for the period January 1st, 2022, to December 31st, 2026, and authorize the appropriate city officials to execute all necessary documents."
That's what it says. Okay, so there's a motion and a second for approval. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, I would like to state that I think in any of these discussions we have as the council, we talk about a lot of long-term things. We talk about smart power water meters that are going to be expensive, that would take us 10, 20 years to recoup that investment. And I think something like this is forming a relationship with somebody who would do a service for the city, but be a partner in the city. I think that from the size of a company like Bank of America versus Pinnacle, I see more opportunities for, and willingness for a company like Pinnacle to make concessions or adjustments to be able to accommodate anything that we need for them more likely to occur than somebody the size of Bank of America. I had a conversation with Robert, who was here tonight from Pinnacle this afternoon, about some of those things. I think it would take some work and some time from staff and even some money in some ways to switch that relationship to Pinnacle, but I think, you know, several members of council have spoken about that. That company does a lot for High Point, and I would like to make a substitute motion that we move that contract to Pinnacle.
Second. Okay, there's a motion and a second. Any discussion on the substitute motion?
Yeah, to Councilman Jones's point, I think something has to be said about the fact that, at least for me, everywhere I go, all throughout the city, all parts of the city, all times of the city, who I see represented in various ways doing the work, the people, is Pinnacle. And I think that, I mean, your point around long-term investment and relationship and partnerships, I also just think that in terms of availability, I mean, if we're having conversations about availability, there's only one bank available here tonight. And granted, there could be good reasons why a big bank is too busy to come tonight, but I think that's a point to be made, right? We've got a bank who comes and shows up every day that I see them. I don't know. I mean, I think there's something to be said about that, so.
Thank you. Any other discussion on the substitute motion? Okay, I'm going to call the roll on that, then. Substitute motion is to, basically, we're going to switch to Pinnacle, and they would authorize city officials to execute all necessary documents. I assume that's your motion.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Councilman Holmes, how do you vote?
No.
Councilman Johnson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Peters?
Aye.
Councilman Moore?
Aye.
Councilman Williams?
No.
Councilman Hudson?
Aye.
Councilman Jones?
Aye.
And Councilman Jefferson?
Aye.
The mayor votes aye. It's approved by a vote of six to three. Before we came in today, we were, just when you thought it was over, before we came in today, we were in a closed session, and we suspended that closed session so that we could go handle this item.
I'm not sure that you did the minutes.
Oh, that's right.
I believe you have some minutes to.
That's true, okay. After we approve the minutes, we're going to go back into closed session.
You're actually going to adjourn this, if you will?
Yeah.
And then you'll return to the closed session under the special.
Okay, that'll work. All right. So there are minutes to be approved. Are there any changes or suggestions for the minutes? Okay, then I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approval of the minutes, please signify by saying aye. Okay. Anyone opposed? The minutes are approved. So we will need a motion to adjourn this meeting, which will take us back into the closed session from the special meeting at 3:30.
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second to adjourn this meeting. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Anyone opposed? That motion passes. So 5:30 meeting is adjourned, and we are back in the closed.